Don't lean in, stare better. Please enter your act of code followed by the four. Welcome to the Prince Edward County Conference Line. Please stand by, we'll be joined in shortly.
I was afraid I'd make that mistake.
Yes, sir.
You're not muted.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January meeting of the Planning Commission. Just before we get started, I do want to read something here for not only everybody here, but also the people that could be on the phone. The Prince Edward County Planning Commission encourages citizens' participation in public meetings through an in-person participation, written comments, and a remote participation by calling 1-844-890. Now we're good? Okay. 890-7777. The access code is 390-313. Additionally, citizens may view the commission meeting live in its entirety at the county's YouTube channel, the link to which is provided on the county website. At that, I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time also, I just want to talk about a little bit about the natural disasters we've had recently in California and last fall in the Carolinas and Georgia. I just want everybody to remember not only that everybody that was impacted by that, loss of life, housing or whatever, remember those people in your prayers, as well as all the people that supported them and continue to support them, organizations, individuals, just helping those people get back to their lives. Thank you. Do we have any conflict of interest disclosures? Yes, sir.
As a member of Prince Edward County Planning Commission, I, John Hogan, am disclosing that I have personal interest in the transaction identified on the January 21st, 2025 Planning Commission Agenda. Item number 14A, Special Use Permit, Gabriel Solar LLC. Solar Energy Facility with Bless filed on behalf of Gabriel Energy LLC, 1201 Wilson Boulevard, Suite 2200, Arlington, Virginia, 22209. I am an owner of three parcels of land totaling approximately 152.76 acres that are included in the Gabriel Energy LLC project application and are identified as map number 104-3-1, 113A36, and 10432. In accordance with Sections 2.2-3112 and 2.2-3115 of the Code of Virginia, I am disclosing my personal interest in this transaction and declaring that I am unable to participate in all discussion and votes of the Planning Commission consideration of this special use permit application. I have filed a written declaration of disclosure with the county administrator's office, a copy of which is available for public view.
Thank you, sir. Every January, we go through the election of officers, so please bear with us briefly while we review from the board. Mr. Love, you want to take it from here?
First item is election of chair. We have a motion, a recommendation for election, for chairperson.
I recommend John Prangman.
Again?
You're doing such a great job.
I'll say.
Okay, we've got a motion, motion and a second. Let me jump down to my, I'm gonna turn it back over to you in a minute, sir. Let me jump over to an agenda, I'll make sure I got all this right. So with that, we go through a vote. Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? I'm sorry, I jumped around. Ms. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
You want to vote for yourselves?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No.
The meeting is yours, chairman.
Okay. Well, thank you. Maybe. We do have the adoption of bylaws. Are there any changes to the bylaws as we see them, Mr. Love?
No, they're the same as we've had in prior years.
Okay. So I do look for a motion to approve the bylaws.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll just go through the, through the board here then. Mr. Page?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Prangman votes yes. So the bylaws are approved as is, and then we have the election of vice chair. Mr. Love, I'll let you do that? Or that's my requirement? Okay. Do we have a motion or a recommendation or nomination for vice chair?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, all right, vote for both, Jack Perry.
I'll say.
Okay. Let's just go around then to ensure. Mr. Perry?
I guess he is.
Okay, there we go. Okay. Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Prangman votes yes. You are vice chairman for another year, sir. Thank you. And again, we just have to go through everything that's set today in time and place of the regular meetings. Our meetings are typically held on the third Tuesday of the month, right here, right here in the boardroom here, and it is always scheduled at 10 o'clock, I mean, at 7 o'clock. We run it straight through. Anything that is brought up in advance, it comes to Mr. Love and the county here, and within the notification, everything, we bring everything up here. When we have public hearings, they are actually announced and put in the paper, as well as on the website. So if we have a motion to adopt the rules, I mean, the time of day, again, we have to go through everything. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, to keep it the same way? Okay. Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Prangman votes yes. Okay, so we will continue with the day and time and place as we have in the past three years. Finally, adoption of rules and procedures for public hearings. Are there any changes to that, Mr. Love?
No, the board supervisors hadn't made any changes since the last time they updated those.
Okay, very good. Again, we need a motion?
So moved.
Okay, a second? Okay. Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Prangman votes yes. So they will stay as is. And finally, approval of minutes? We have a motion to approve the minutes as we're doing?
From last meeting.
From last meeting, yes, I'm sorry. From, okay. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes, except for our new staff here? Okay, do we have a second then?
Second.
Okay. I saw no changes to the minutes from the last meeting. We'll just go around again. Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
And Mr. Prangman votes yes. Okay, so the minutes have been approved. We do have two individuals we need to recognize tonight for their time and support of the board here.
First, you want me to read your file?
Sure, you go right ahead.
First one is a certificate, a certificate of recognition ordered to Clifford J. Leatherwood by the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors and Prince Edward County Planning Commission. This is an appreciation and recognition of service to the citizens of Prince Edward County, Virginia, through service on Prince Edward County Planning Commission from July 1st, 2003, to October 10th, 2024.
That's 21 years.
21 years of service. I think we'd like to get the dog can kind of.
Okay.
Try to put another year.
Here's where you stand from.
All right. All right, big guy.
Look at this. Thank you.
You can be the road between two come on.
No, no, no.
Our second recognition is for Henry E. Womack. Mr. Womack, this is presented by the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission, appreciation and recognition of service to the citizens of Prince Edward County through service on the Planning Commission from July 1, 2021, to December 31st, 2024.
Thank you so much. I learned a whole lot from being on this board, man. It's a whole lot easier on this side than it is on the other side.
At the same time, I would like to welcome two new members to the board, Mr. Hogan and Mr. Hart. Welcome. Thank you very much for your support in advance. We do have a public hearing on the agenda tonight, and I'll just explain quickly how the public hearing goes. It's first, we'll do an overview of the public hearing here, and then from there, we'll have the applicant come up and speak a little bit towards the public hearing and what their special use permit is for. And then, after that's done, we will open the public hearing. The first people we'll bring up will be the people that signed up to speak for or against. After that, we'll have somebody here, anybody here that would like to speak that maybe didn't sign up. Once that's done and all discussion is done, we'll close the public hearing, and the board will review decision whether we accept and approve the special use permit, whether we decline it, or whether we table it. If it's approved, it goes on to the Board of Supervisors at the next meeting. If we decline it, the Board of Supervisors can review that. If it's tabled, then we will ask the applicant to come back, possibly with questions we may have, before we can either vote on for it or against it. And again, the thing we ask is anytime anybody speaks, just come up to the podium, state your name and where you live in the county, and that just gives us an opportunity, because everything is live on the, on the website, and we want everybody to have a chance at any public hearing to give your support or, you know, adverse, whatever you feel towards or against it. Thank you. Mr. Love?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we've got two public hearings that are related to the same topic, so that leads us to item A, ordinance amendment to amend Appendix B zoning of the Prince Edward County Code, 2-1003B, in order to allow for commercial kennels by special use permit in a college residential district. For background, I had communication from, and a request from Lindsay Mulvey to start a business. The business is characterized, and you'll hear more about that in the special use permit hearing, as a doggy daycare. Since we did not have, or have very limited to know, commercial uses in the college residential district, it does require a code change. The college residential district covers Hampton-Sidney and some extra parcels, but we did not have anything that, we don't have doggy daycare, if you will, as, or daycare for animals in our code. What we did have in other districts is kennels, commercial kennels. We have them in several other districts, and they're, in all of those districts, they are approved with a special use permit. So the recommendation from staff would be to characterize this as a placeholder, the type of use, as a commercial kennel, and to add this use to the language. As you can see, under item five on the draft ordinance, it is, it's underlined in bold, it's simply creating this placeholder and creating this, this use in the Section B, which still requires a special use permit. That still allows the Planning Commission and the board to put rules and conditions onto the use. We do have development standards in the zoning ordinance that all commercial kennels have to go by, and, but again, the second hearing is related to the success of this, this ordinance amendment.
Correct.
Any questions of me?
Any questions for, any questions for Mr. Love? Again, it's confusing, but we have to have two public hearings, one to allow this ordinance amendment, and then after that, whatever decision's there, then we can go ahead and take the special use permit for the doggy daycare.
Okay, you might, we've got speakers for the first one, but not the second one. I'm gonna just ask who's got here. Yeah, that's the second one.
We did not have any speakers for the ordinance amendment, but with that, I will open the public hearing if anybody wishes to speak for or against the ordinance amendment here. I'm sorry?
Am I allowed to speak?
Oh, the ordinance amendment?
Yes.
You're more than welcome to. You'd have to come up to the podium. And just again, state your name and where you live within the county.
Okay. My name is Lindsay Mulvey. I am the one who is seeking the ordinance amendment. Currently, I am living on the Hampton-Sidney College Campus with my husband, Michael, and we are looking to hopefully build a house on the college campus back, excuse me, back in the Roxbury sub-development. So I know it states that I am looking to do a commercial kennel, which is quite the opposite of what really I am trying to do, and I know that that was just kind of a placeholder name for it. And so I really wanted to clarify what it is that I really do want to do. It's more so, what I would define it as, more realistic terms would be a small-scale, in-home, doggy daycare and boarding. There is nothing special about my house that wouldn't be there otherwise. I would not, I will not have any kind of runs out in the backyard. It will be one single backyard that is fenced in, just like it would be if I just had my own dog there, which I do. It would not have any kind of special building that dogs would live in while we're there. The dogs will live in the home, just as if they lived with me. I like to coin it that is their home away from home, so they get to spend their time with me, just as if they were living at home. So if you go on vacation for a week, they get to come stay with me, and they can sleep in bed with me. They, only time that they ever get crated is if that's something that the owner's parents desire. I don't have 20 crates in my basement that sit up. I actually maximum, the maximum amount of dogs that I ever allow is six, but I tend to average somewhere between two and four. Over the two years that I have been doing this, I have only ever had six twice, and so, and that was plenty, more than enough. I would never, ever consider increasing it. I am a one-man band, and I always first, ever want to keep it that way. I worked at a larger daycare facility, dog daycare facility, and it was not what I had envisioned in my life, and that is actually why I created this business for myself. So I also limit it drop-off and pickup times to morning and evening, so there's only limited hours in the morning and evening, so there aren't, there won't be massive amounts of traffic coming and going. And it honestly, with the boarding side of it, it tends to be less traffic, because of that, they're only coming one day, and then they're coming back five days later. So they're not, they don't tend to come every day, morning and evening. I also holidays, I don't allow pickup and drop-offs, so there's less traffic because of that as well. I never leave dogs outside unattended for many a reason, one of which being noise. I know dogs bark, that's the nature of it, and I, I don't want noise either. I enjoy my sleep probably more than anybody that I know, and so I want to ensure that we keep a quiet neighborhood, so they, they will always be attended outside. I also don't want to lose anybody's pet, so that's another great reason why I'm always, always, always outside with them, and also for their sanitary needs. I always want to make sure that their play area is cleaned up well, so they are not stepping in it. I'm not stepping in it and tracking it through, again, my home. And I always do a meet and greet with the dogs to ensure that they are well, well behaved, and that they can get along with others, again, because they do live in the home with all the other dogs that come. So again, if I have two dogs from two different homes, they all have to be able to commingle with each other, because they will all share the same areas, same common spaces, same everything. Only time that I do separate them is meal times and things like that. Again, they sleep inside, no dogs would ever be left outside overnight, no dogs would be left in any kind of outbuilding. We won't have any kind of outbuilding. We are planning on having a basement with a basement garage with plenty of storage, and a ranch home, three bedrooms, two bath is our plan right now. We haven't finalized anything at this point. And a single fenced-in area with ideally a six-foot privacy fence. Again, all things are up in the air at this point, because we are talking to a contractor, so if these things don't fully align with the ordinances, we are able to amend them as, as needed. I do also require vaccines, again, for unwanted diseases. I don't want them either. Again, I own a dog of my own, don't want them, and a dog license. And again, just to reiterate that our house will just be a house. It's not going to have any kind of large outbuilding or anything like that. I have no plans of ever expanding and having any kind of employees. It is something that I have been proud to be a single-owned and operated business for the past two years, and been able to not upset any current neighbors in our town, actually back in Ohio, that we're moving from currently.
Thank you. First of all, welcome to the county.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a big move, six hours, so. I thought it'd be a little warmer this week. So far, it hasn't.
One quick question. Will the doggy daycare not start until your new home is completed? Is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So once, once you have your occupancy, then you will be able to operate?
Yes.
Okay, you're not operating in a temporary house or a rental house or anything?
No, our current living situations do not allow for that.
No, that helps. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other questions of the board for the applicants?
I'd like to know, how close are your neighbors?
So we will be in the corner, the last lot on the left, and there's actually an empty lot next to us, full of very tall trees, and then there's one lot kind of across from us that's empty-ish, and then there's one catty corner. So very relatively far? I'm not good with distances, but at least an entire lot of probably about an acre in between us and our nearest neighbor.
And is there a timeframe on how long a dog or the dogs will be outside?
It depends, if the weather's really nice out, we stay out for a while, but we, again, I'm always out there with them, so like if they get unruly and restless out there, and they're deciding to just be obnoxiously loud, then we go inside and play, so that it's less of a nuisance, because it irritates me too, and so I'm just like, nobody wants to hear that, so I bring them inside, because dogs will be dogs, but then I just bring them in.
Thank you. Yeah. Mr. Fuller, go ahead.
This might be a leading question, but you alluded to having conducted this business before. What problems, if any, have you incurred in your past business activities?
So I actually, kind of going back to your question of how close are my neighbors, so in the house that I currently live in, in, well, I'm moving from in Ohio, my neighbors are probably about eight feet away from us, and I have actually never incurred a complaint from our neighbors. I've never incurred a complaint about traffic. We have a driveway there, similar to what we will have here, where they will be able to completely be on our land and not disturb any kind of neighbors, you know, turning around in there, where also have a six-foot privacy fence there, so that they can't see the dogs, you know, they don't get out, those kinds of things. And same thing with noise, I'm out there to monitor it, and just to be sure that if they do get a little rowdy, that we just come back inside. And with cleanup of their waste and things like that, I, again, stay outside with them to clean up in a timely manner, so that there's no kind of smell, especially in the dead of summer, whenever it's super, super hot, then it can definitely get a little less than pleasant out there, so I try to keep up with it even better then.
You said maximum of six dogs, including your own, or what would be your total number of animals?
So it would be seven then, so my dog would be the seventh. Yeah, so maximum of six of extra dogs.
But you said averaging two to four?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, I typically will get two from one family and one from another, and then one will go home, and I'll get two from another, and so, very, very, very rarely have I ever had six.
Do you limit the type of breed? Do you allow aggressive breed dogs?
I don't allow aggressive dogs. I don't limit the breed, per se. I do a meet and greet with all of the dogs that I have, so I will bring them to the home, I allow them back into the yard, so that I can meet with them, I can interact with them. And then once I've interacted with them for a while, I then bring, will bring my dog out, who then, as long as they intermingle well together, and I can see that their behaviors are good with other dogs, including my own, then we can go from there. And I've worked with some behavioralists to be able to tell if dogs are not so friendly with others, or not so friendly with humans, and things like that, because I don't want to take my safety, my family's safety, my dog's safety, neighbor's safety, anything into, to risk. So it's not necessarily breed-specific, but just temperament-specific for me.
Mr. Love, other than the zoning, our request is, the business license is required for this?
Prince Edward County does not have a business licensing, so the special
Prince Edward County does not have a business licensing, so the special use permit, if approved, would be the license.
They act as one in the, as well, we'll clarify.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the board for the applicant?
I'm curious, as far as I know, there are no limits on the number of dogs that any of us could own, correct, in Prince Edward County? Ms. Mulvey could own 10 dogs.
That's correct.
Correct, yes.
And there's nothing...
That's correct. The fact that this is a commercial enterprise triggers this, the need for an ordinance amendment and the need for a special use permit. But if she had her, yeah, if she had 10 dogs in a fenced-in area, she could have that tomorrow.
Mr. Chair, Robert, we did add non-commercial kennel.
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
Which has a limit, you can have, you can have that any dog, but a certain number will have to be on page.
Yeah, yeah, well, you can have them in a house. You can't have them outside.
Yes.
That's correct.
And how would we know if Ms. Mulvey had more than six or six dogs?
She, because she's been very upfront from day one. She called me early on and asked me what this process was, and she understood it.
I don't want more than six.
Was a business. She's been very transparent.
I don't think my husband will allow it either. If you knew him, you would know that the cleanliness of our house and our area means a lot to him, so therefore, six is a maximum.
It would be a need. I, as a dog owner, I can say that there's a need for, for dog daycare.
Yeah.
Or overnight. And if you become very successful, what's to stop you from taking more dogs?
I have told people no, and I've actually, back to where you asked about breed temperament, I have told where the dog originally was fine, but then kind of when they went through adolescence, they became aggressive towards dogs, and I then had to tell them no, that I was no longer able to watch them. So, it's not, I can genuinely say I am absolutely positively obsessed with dogs. I want nothing more than to work with dogs and, you know, I love them, and, but I have no problem telling people no. I have told people no on plenty of occasions, and if I do become more successful, you just have to book earlier. It's, yeah, I don't, I don't want to expand, I don't, don't want to get with employees, I don't, I want this to be what it is. You know, my dog didn't enjoy the bigger boarding places, she hated being there, she wanted to be in a home, and that's really what sparked my love for this.
Okay. Yes, sir.
One of the gentlemen would like to speak.
She said everything she wanted.
I want to put you on the spot.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay.
We did receive three letters.
Mr. Love?
Yes, so we, Ms. Mulvey, we received three letters. The first one is from a resident on Rock Road, Glenn Colby Jr. and Maureen Colby, Cully, and they were word, they were word specifically about traffic. We got, we had, the second letter we had is from Julia Palmer, she's on Via Sacra Drive, specifically talks about the quiet neighborhood, concerned about traffic, speed limit, and that, these all relate to both of these, they, the letters we came in, they're at your place setting, talks about the ordinance amendment and the special use. And the final one is from Lucy Carter Fulton Smith, who is also on Via Sacra, and also talks about the history of the, of the area, and historic nature of the area, and traffic, roadways. So, those are the three communications we've had since your, since your planning commission packet went out last week. I haven't had no other correspondence, I've had no calls for or against from these individuals or anyone else about the ordinance amendment or the special use permits since we advertised.
Thank you.
And she is on, like I said, at the, would be at the dead end.
Right.
On the left-hand side of Oliver Lane.
Right.
The, the letters we got are from folks that are on different.
Different roads.
Connecting, but different roads.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. One more, just to add to that, and I believe she is planning on speaking tonight, but to the traffic, we do have a daycare in one of the homes back near where I would be, and so I don't see how it is going, you know, to add a whole lot of traffic. You know, she does a very similar pickup and drop-off situation as I would do, so.
Is this a licensed daycare?
Yes.
Yes, it is a licensed daycare.
Yes. Yeah, so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well, but I do believe...
Do you know how many children?
I believe, I think it's six, but I believe she's going to speak tonight as well, so she can speak more on it than I could. I don't want to speak for her.
Will you, I just got, just brought up something, will you be having dogs on weekends? You said no holidays, but on weekends, will you?
Yeah, and, and it's not that I won't have them on holidays, it's just that I wouldn't allow pickup and drop-off on holidays, and so, to limit traffic on those, but that I would, I would keep them, and I would be home with them again, so that, yeah.
You'll have to forgive me for asking so many questions, I'm new at this, but can we put some sort of condition on it, that if the dogs bark and the neighbors complain, that we no longer...
We would do that, we would address that in a special use permit, but we have a noise ordinance.
Yes.
Generally speaking, I know you're new, it takes two residents of different households to trigger the noise ordinance. We also have statements, though, in the commercial and non-commercial, it talks about barking dogs, that we've, we've added in, in recent times. So, there are things already in the county code to address noise. And, and, and when we get to the special use permit, I'll reference that and make a little clarity on that, but I've got her special use permit tied to our noise ordinance, our kennel laws, and our zoning ordinance. So, it, basically, all of those would govern this site, if approved.
But it does not have an impact on the ordinance amendment, because we're just adding dog kennels.
The use.
The use, yes. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, before we open the public hearing, I did want to ask if anybody from Hampton Sydney College would like to speak, because it's on your property, the college property, do you want to speak, or do you want to just hold anything on that?
John, I signed up to speak.
Okay, the other kind, then I'll go that way, okay. So, with that in mind, we will open the public hearing for the ordinance amendment. Does anybody wish to speak, other than the applicant, regarding the ordinance amendment only, not the special use permit? Anybody on the phone? Can the individual on the phone let me know if you're speaking regarding the ordinance amendment or the public hearing for the special use permit?
I think that I am meant to speak on the, with the comment.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I got one question.
Yes.
The college residential district, specifically, what does that encompass?
Hampton Sydney.
Geographically.
Geographically, it's Hampton. Have Sydney College property per se.
Yes.
The, the campus itself.
I know, but there's some...
Outline areas, yes.
There's some outlining wooded areas around there, so I didn't know whether that, I'm just trying, geographically, what does it...
Right now, it's all property owned by Hampton Sydney College.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. If there's nobody wishing to speak for or against, then we will close the public hearing. At this time, the board will just discuss the ordinance amendment, and answer any questions regarding the board, and then we'll make a motion, whichever way we decide. I think the applicant answered the majority of questions we had coming across here. So, what we're doing right now is we're just voting on the decision about the ordinance amendment to amend the zoning of Prince Edward County, and in this case, the college.
And what this mechanically would do, would add commercial kennels as a use, but they're only allowed by special use permit. It does not open them up. Any application, whether it's Ms. Mulvey's, or someone tomorrow, would come back to this planning commission and the board of supervisors to have a commercial kennel operation.
It's no different than any other special use permit, that they would have to have an applicant here. This doesn't set any precedent or anything, other than we're just adding that as an ordinance amendment.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was...
Any questions, discussion amongst the board? I'm sorry. We have the public hearing closed, I'm sorry. The questions would just be amongst the board here, that's, that's the way we do it.
Well, here, I plan to talk during the special use permit.
What's that?
Make sure...
Yeah, you have the opportunity when we come to the special use permit to speak, but this is just on the ordinance. And since we closed the public hearing, I can't let anybody speak. I apologize, but that's just the policy. Questions at all from the board discussion? Again, we're looking to see, have a motion to, for the ordinance amendment to add the dog kennels to this, or, you know, as opposed to it. So, we're looking for, you know, a motion on this side. What we're doing again is, if you look at the way it's all written up, alls we're doing is adding commercial kennels as permitted uses by a special permit, and that's all we're doing right now. And, you know, we have multiple other things in there, so we're just adding this. Again, it has nothing to do with automatic on this, it just has to do that, by special use permit and review, we can make that decision.
And she's falling on a commercial because she is being paid for this, this would be the stigma.
Yes, it is a business, yes. How open up do we have a motion to add kennels, commercial kennels?
I'm making a motion to add.
Okay.
Commercial kennel to the...
Do we have a second?
I'll snag it.
Okay, then we'll just go again around to see where we stand with this, and you vote for or against. If you vote for, just say yes. Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Prangman, yes. So, the, the ordinance, the dog kennels, commercial kennels have been added. This will be just move up to the county board of supervisors, and I thank you for everybody there. We do have now the public hearing for the special use permit. Yes, sir. If you could give us an overview, Mr. Love?
Yes, sir. So, the county received an application request by Lindsay Mulvey for the purpose of establishment of, I characterize it as commercial kennel, because that's what we have in our county code. We've got development standards in that, it's, she, her, by her own characterization, it's more of a doggy daycare.
Right.
This public hearing was duly advertised in the, in the Farmville Herald, adjoining property owners, sent notifications. This purpose of the special use permit would be to allow the use of the doggy daycare breeding, boarding, and training. I do have some template-only conditions that I, that I provided to you all. Sounds like you may want to beef those up, or maybe even add some more in. We, again, we had the, the same, it's the same letters related, that I, names that I read off to you before, for the ordinance amendment, they counted, they, they were not for the special use permit, and the applicant is here to answer any questions. I'd be glad to answer anything from, from my office that you may have.
Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Love? Okay. Well, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. We do have a list of names, so I'll ask those people if they'd wish to speak. If so, again, just come up to the podium, state your name and where you live within the, in the county.
Do you want to get, if she needs, if she does get a presentation for you?
Yes. Did you want to make another presentation, or do you feel what you said regarding the ordinance covers everything? You're more than welcome to come up, the applicant has that opportunity.
Just add a couple things on that.
Sure, okay. You don't have to reintroduce yourself, we know who you are, but the podium is yours.
So, on those potential conditions that Robert had sent out to myself and you all, just wanted to reiterate that the final locations of incidental facilities may be adjusted, so there will not be any incidental facilities. There are no plans for that ever, here, now, ever, future. It will be our house, and we are working with the contractor and the Hampton Sydney Housing Committee to have an approved housing plan there, and so, we are more than happy to also send those housing plans wherever they need to be, just in so that they are approved by code. And just also down in the transportation, that there needs to be, it's the responsibility of me that there's room for all employees and patrons to park. There will only be one employee, which would be myself, and all patrons, we will, again, be having a garage on the back of our house, so there will be a plenty, a plenty long driveway for any patrons to park in, turn around in, and not have to disturb any kinds of neighbors, and be able to park off the street. And that, it's, again, very small scale, never have any desire to increase it, because it is going to also be my home, too. I want it to keep it that way, I want to keep it nice, especially since we are going to be building a brand-new home. Don't want to completely ruin it. And dogs are never unsupervised outside, inside, they overnight, they're never unsupervised overnight, period. They, inside, outside, whether they go outside for a period of time to go to the bathroom. And in the, the, for the exterior lighting, we, I only ever really bring the dogs in the outside, I'm sorry, in the backyard outside. I don't bring them to the front yard, again, just to keep the noise levels down. And for the lighting, well, you know, we would just have normal kind of outside sconces in the front. The backyard would just be small bistro lights, just to illuminate, so that I could see them, so I know where they are, those sorts of things, but there would not be any kind of large spotlights or anything like that. We kind of are enjoying the idea of moving to a very rural area where there aren't streetlights, which is something that I'm not used to. I grew up in the city of Pittsburgh, and streetlights are my jam, so I'm kind of excited about having a place where I'll be able to see all the stars and the moon and everything, so I would, I'd also enjoy that. And being responsible for the appearance of the site, including litter pickup and anything like that, I have all of those tools at home. I have a handy-dandy little scooper and trashcan that helps me keep up with all of those kinds of daily maintenance kinds of tasks, again, because I want it to be just as nice as, as anybody else does. I want my house to be just where somebody, if somebody came over, they could come to the backyard and walk around and not have to worry about anything, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I understand you said that these might be expanded upon, which is totally fine, but just those were the kinds of things that I wanted to...
Sure.
...make sure that you guys understood from my end.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
What size is your building lot?
My lot is just over an acre, 1.07 acres.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a brief overview, as we do the public hearing, we do ask, again, everybody, I'll go through the people that have signed up here, we ask everybody to, again, come to the podium, introduce yourself. We ask also, try to limit it to about three minutes, because we do have some people here, I know on the list, but other people that may want to speak. And if you're going to say the same thing that somebody else said a couple of times, we, we just, you know, you can say ditto or whatever, but just in, you know, with everybody else here. So, at this time, I will open the public hearing, I'll get down the list. Mr. Richard Panely?
Richard Panely, I'm a resident on the college campus at Hampton Sydney, 360 Via Sacra. Good evening. So, I, as the dean of students of an all-male college, I've learned a long time ago, it's probably best for me to prepare thoughts for anything I have to say after 5:00 PM, so I appreciate you giving me the opportunity, and bear with me while I, I get through just a few thoughts here. So, I've lived in Farmville for the better part of the last 15 years, and I've worked for Hampton Sydney College for the last 11 years, going on 12. I'm here in support of the special use permit presented here this evening, and I've had the pleasure of getting to know the family in question here since their arrival to Hampton Sydney. They're amazing people, mentors to our students, and I feel confident saying that not only are they devoted to our college, to our mission and our students, but they are also committed to being good stewards of our community, which they have evidenced in many ways since, in the short time that they've been a part of the Hampton Sydney family. One of their passions, as you've heard, is the love for and care of dogs, and having previously managed a successful dog-watching business prior to their arrival to Hampton Sydney, I feel that our community should welcome them with open arms. Many along the street in which they are currently planning to build a home have dogs, walk dogs, ride bikes, do all sorts of things, and that makes, is an important part of our community. All of those dogs do dog things, they bark, they leave things behind, they might run through our yards chasing a squirrel, and that's just part of living in a, in a close-knit community. I find no reason to allow these individuals to join our community while also running this small business from their home, because of the benefit that both will have for our community. I do not find the potential for their endeavor to be any more disruptive or harmful to the, the sanctity of our neighborhood or property values than things like deer-eating our tomatoes, specifically at my house, or groundhogs that are rooting through our yards. Rather, I see a major benefit here for those who struggle to find suitable pet care when they travel or while they're at work. And of course, the greatest benefit, in my opinion, is having someone who can sufficiently care for an animal while also having great, kind, new neighbors. So again, I'm in support of the S U P. And as a member of the college housing committee, too, I'll say we have our own internal process for looking at these things. So, you know, I'm, I feel confident that any future requests that come along will pass through the same levels of scrutiny and discretion as the process here presented. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stan Chain?
Hi, thank you for having us. My name is Stan Chain. I actually, my address is 31 Oliver Lane. I want to talk a little bit. I've been here 35 years at the college, so I love this place more than anything. The lots back there, you're asking about, someone asked about how close. Lindsay said it, in Ohio, she was eight feet from her neighbors and she never got complaints. These are one acre lots. So they're big lots. The lot she's, they're going to build on. There are two empty one acre lots between, we're the same side of the street from our house. I would be happy if it was next door to us. Now, as far as six dogs, like David Hart said, there's nothing to prevent anybody from owning six dogs. So as far as the noise ordinance, Lindsay's convinced me completely that there's not, noise is not going to be an issue. As far as six dogs go, this past Christmas for a week, all our kids came home. We had five dogs in our house for one week. And I'm not sure if her neighbors knew it or not, but I certainly knew it. But they were, it's having five or six dogs. I just don't see how the noise is going to be an issue based on what Lindsay said. The only possible issue might be a traffic thing. Now, you heard mentioned that there's a daycare, five or six kids, depending on how old they are, I believe. And the traffic is, cars come and pick them up twice a day. I actually like the fact that that traffic is there because it slows down traffic. It slows down cars when they see cars picking up children and so forth. So I have absolutely no concern about a few cars coming down, you know, once per day. I don't have small children anymore. Even then, I wouldn't be worried. The traffic's really not an issue for me. The sound's not an issue. I just want to speak, Lindsay's said pretty much everything I needed to hear. And I am full support of this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Isley?
Good evening. I am Kathleen Isley. Live at 78 Rock Road. You actually go by my house on your way down to where all the others live. I am actually the owner and operator of Kiki's Clubhouse, the licensed in-home daycare that I've run for the five years that I have lived here. I have five to six kids every day. Some are siblings. So sometimes there's only five cars coming every day, dropping off and picking up. I have limited drop off in the morning, limited pickup in the evening. To my knowledge, I've never heard of any complaints or any issues. I also am in full support of this. I think it's a great thing. I think our neighborhood would benefit from it. I think it's something that is, that is well needed. I don't see an issue with, with traffic. I don't think it's going to be a major problem. And again, sound, noise, they are at the far end. And again, they're, they're dogs. And it's a very dog, heavily populated, dog friendly area that we, that we live in. So I am in full support of this and wish her the best of luck.
Thank you. Mrs. Marian Colly? No, okay. Mr. Ken Copeland?
Good evening. I'm Ken Copeland. I'm vice president for business affairs and finance at Hampton Sydney. I live at 31 Briarwood Drive in Farmville. So I'm not a resident of the campus. And I will not duplicate anything that Dr. Chain or Dr. Panely shared. They both serve on the housing committee with me. Any type of a, of a request like this originates in the business office at Hampton Sydney. And I just want to say on behalf of the Mulveys, they have followed the protocol exactly as we have asked them to. They have not yet bought the lot. They are in the planning stages of buying the lot. So even before that, that sale was consummated, they started this process. So I applaud the diligence in trying to, you know, make sure that they dot i's and cross t's properly. I don't have anything more to add other than to say that I appreciate very much all of the diligence that they have gone through to this point. And I'm in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Ally Schulteis? Okay, that's on the phone?
Yeah.
Okay. Ally, are you on the phone? What's that?
Yes, I'm right here.
Okay. You're not at the podium, but you're good to go.
I would be at the podium if I could. My name is Alice Schulteis, and I just wanted to, on behalf of the Mulveys, I am an insurance business owner from Marietta, Ohio. Lindsay has worked in my office for the last four years. I am a board member of the Marietta Chamber of Commerce. So I'm very familiar with the processes that you guys have went through. And I'm also an active user of the business. So I just wanted to provide some support and some clarification on what our business model looks like from a user of the business and also community member that has been working in the business. Lindsay, to say that she is a dog person would be a gross statement. She does amazing things with my clients. They love her. But to say that my dogs love her probably more than I do would not be an understatement. She is meant to be in the dog of the business. She has been in the business for, long, long before she actually opened her own. It has needed, it has been needed business in our community. And I can be certain that it's a needed business. There is someone mentioned, well, what if you become too popular? She already is too popular. But she, like she said, she has no problem limiting her model, making sure that the dogs are first and foremost safe and respectful members of her community. She has spent countless hours with mine, training them and working on their behavior. And I, as a person who have dropped off and picked up my personal dogs from her home many occasions, I've never run into another vehicle. I've never had an issue with traffic control. I've never had an issue with noise or anything like that. I spend many, many nights in Lindsay's backyard with other dogs that she is helping. And she always is very mindful of the neighbors of us there in making sure that everything is running smoothly. I also have her homeowner's insurance and we've never had an issue there. So I just thought that I would throw that out there. So I want to thank you guys for taking in the Mulveys down there. I'm excited for them. And I, and I hope this goes through because it's given her an opportunity to be a business owner in our community and made her a better community member for the city of Marietta, too. And so I know she'd do well down there in Hampton Sydney.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Schulteis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Arietti?
I have been a resident at Hampton Sydney since 1980. But I've only lived in this area of Roxbury for 20 years. And I, my address is 54 Oliver Lane. My wife and I were the first people to build a house on that street. And I'm not going to repeat anything remotely similar to what the previous speakers have said. My worry is, have for the, entirely been satisfied by Mrs. Mulvey and her, what she said about her, the limits of her ambitions for the kennel. I'm worried about the dogs themselves because we live in a neighborhood where there are bears, coyotes, bobcats, and foxes. And that's, so I'm hoping that the fence that you build will be solid and really defer, deter the animals from crossing it. But the worst fear that I have for the dogs is, emerges from the people who live in the neighborhood, who use their barbecue grills. And they're all good cooks and those odors will drive the dogs crazy with desire to go and pursue the odors that emanate from the grills, especially my wife Barbara's grill. And I fear for the dog sanity. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Arietti. Am I invited to the next barbecue?
Next planning commission is.
Emily Hall? No, okay.
I would like to speak.
Okay, again, I apologize. I just have to go through the list first and then I'll have you come up after. And make sure you let us know what is on the menu when you're going to do the barbecue, okay? Okay. Shannon Hall?
Yeah, I signed the wrong paper.
Okay.
I'm in favor of small business.
Okay, thank you. Margaret Moore?
Hi, everyone. Hi, my name is Margaret Moore. I'm a fourth generation residential property owner on either side of Via Sacra, past where the Hampton Sydney College property ends. First off, I want to welcome you and I appreciate and allowed you for your endeavors to do a very needed service. However, I'm generally against the grain in many things. I do not live at 742 Via Sacra, which is my home of record because I'm a United States Navy physician. So I've been deployed a lot and I have the benefit of an excellent caretaker that's been there for 15 years. I think I can speak for my sister and myself, who still remain friends and have split up the property from great granddaddy, granddaddy, and my father, between her property owner lines so that she can give it to her sons and my house, which I keep for a sanctuary for all of my family. I can actually see Lot 10 from my sister's property. We have about 126 acres that surround in a U shape the bottom of Via Sacra and then border up to another very outstanding U shape property owner in the, in the area. And I've spoken to him and he is in opposition to you. And I don't want to say I'm in opposition to anything that is happening with the doggy daycare. What I'm in opposition to is the slippery slope that we might go down. I would beg of you that if you get the special use permit, that it's not transferable. And I can say that I appreciate getting to know two people from Hampton Sydney whose faces I haven't been able to recognize since I've been deployed. And then some familiar faces that I hope will remain stewards of this area. There was one situation, and I'll stop talking after this, but my next door neighbor had a very tortured dog that was always in a cage. And so the barking was about 10 years of incessancy. And that is not what is making me go in precedent about making a precedent for having a business on a college that has been there since 1774 without making money except for from the people who maturcate. So, any questions? Especially from you? Okay, welcome again to the community, but those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Chairman, I can address her transferring. For your, for your knowledge, one of the standard conditions, and I'm going to read it off, one of the standard conditions I put in Oliver, it's a template the county uses, is this permit is not transferable except and unless written notice to the county regarding the transfer occurs. The, if it, if they were to sell their house, if somebody wanted, if this were approved, the special use permit would only transfer with the same rules and conditions. Any substant, any changes to any, anything, if this were approved, would have to come back to the planning commission and back to the board. So if they, the, we've got, right now, we've got 12 rules. They may add, add or subtract more. The board might do the same thing. But the way this is framed and the way the special use permit for any type of application, it's only transferable as it is. And when we get written notice and then we reissue it as staff, staff vets that letter. Make sure, I have that conversation so that we don't make a misstep. So we don't let someone else take over and think they can do something different. So the way, if this gets permitted, it's only the way it's permitted. And any change would, material change would come back to the planning commission and board and start all over with the same type process.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Chain? You're good right now? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Arietti? I apologize, I'm not trying to not allow you to speak or anything.
I just couldn't sign up.
That's okay.
I have, I have different thoughts. I'm rather hesitant about this.
Okay.
I just see, as Margaret sees, a creeping amount of commercialism coming in. We were all blindsided by Kathleen's daycare center, which she has, which is successful and it causes no problem. But at what point is there a tipping point to inconvenience and cars coming back and forth constantly? I, I have a real concern about that. I also have a concern that what initially is said, that it's going to be limited to four to six dogs. Maybe that could become more, hopefully not. But you know, you're saying this in the best and all sincerity, but things change. We lived, we have lived on the college campus for over 40 years, 20 years of which we lived at fraternity circle, and I'm a little shell shocked from that. And we moved to Oliver Lane to, for the quiet life, and I just don't want that spoiled in my dotage, okay? So let's, you know, I hope.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I addressed your concern there. One of the stipulations we can put in there that the maximum of six dogs is one of the things we'll have in the special use permit. So that'll help address that portion of it.
Okay, all right. That's, that gives me solace. That gives me solace. But I'm, and I have spoken to some of my neighbors who are, who share some of my concerns. And I know that Lucy Carter Fulton Smith's letter was not positive for this.
Correct.
So when Mr. Love was saying that there were three letters, I've read her letter. It was, wasn't positive. She had the same concerns that, that my husband and I and some of our neighbors share. So I just want to say that. So let's keep our fingers crossed. I wish you luck if you are able to get this. And welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Arietti. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak for or against the special use permit?
I think I do want to speak.
I'm sorry, sit down and forget it. No, you go ahead, go ahead.
I'm Linda Chain. I live at 31 Oliver Lane. It would be very desirable for me for this to open up for the first time in several years. My husband and I thought, oh, maybe we can have a dog after all. Because now that we're empty nesters, we don't, we didn't want to have to worry about a dog. This might be a possibility where we could have a dog and then we have someone that can take care of it. Traffic has been mentioned several times. I live on that street. I'm very aware of every single car that goes up and down. I will admit that there is someone that drives too fast down that street. I agree with my husband when he says that actually this might cause people to go a little bit slower, which, for which I'm very grateful. Again, we had five dogs. No one complained. We had five cars going in and out of the neighborhood for two full weeks, and it was never an issue. I know that this isn't going to be a slippery slope. I very much desire to have them as neighbors. And there are other neighbors who don't take care of their dogs. As I am aware that certain kids get off the school bus and they step in someone else's dog's mess, who don't clean up after themselves, within our neighborhood, within just the very few streets where we live. So I'm grateful to know that they will be taking care of their area in my neighborhood. And I hear dogs bark all the time. I'm not worried about her because she's going to be taking care, she's not going to leave her dog outside like some do. She's going to be taking care of the dogs. It comforts me. I'm excited at the prospect and have my approval.
Thank you. Again, anybody in the audience wish to speak regarding the permit? Okay, is there anybody on the call that would like to speak for or against the special use permit?
Please.
Okay, can you state your name?
Yes, this is Marley Kimbrough. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my husband, Kimbrough, and my family.
Okay, the podium's yours.
Okay, thank you. I, we live at 101 Oliver Lane. We will be the closest neighbors to the Mulveys. We are the only six male employees in the company. My, let's definitely be able to try to go out and see. I have not, yes.
Are you, Mrs. Kimbrough, are you on a speakerphone?
I am, let me take it off.
Okay, thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm not sure what you have. I'm the only one on Oliver Lane who has children at home. We have a seven-year-old, a five-year-old, and a newborn. And originally, I will say that I had concerns that the neighbors brought up as well, but having spoken with Lindsay Atlee, those concerns have been alleviated and we are in full support of them receiving this use permit. And we are the closest neighbors and we are thrilled to have them back there.
Well, thank you very much. Much appreciated. If there's nobody else wishing to speak for or against it, we will close. Whoops, I'm sorry.
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If she gets a special use permit, a slippery slope, does that make it easier for other residents on the campus to get a special use permit?
It doesn't change. Every special use permit is treated as an individual case. So it has nothing to do with how many special use permits are on any property or whatever, okay?
There's no precedent.
No, there's no precedent at all. No, each one is viewed as an individual special use permit, okay? Thank you for the question, though. Okay. Okay, I'll close the public hearing at this time so the board can just review before we decide which way to go.
On the conditions, I would like to add a limit of six plus...
Six dogs.
Okay.
A total amount or just six plus whatever? If she gets four more dogs?
Well, I think we talked about before, and she mentioned, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you mentioned there'd never be more than seven dogs there because you have one dog right now.
That's my understanding.
Okay, yeah, okay. So max of seven, which includes the resident's...
Personal.
Personal dog, okay. Personal dog, okay. Yes, Mr. Skidmore?
What type of fence are you going to use, Chain?
That was a question there.
I prefer to do a wood.
Is there a height that you know now?
60 would be ideal just for safety.
Okay.
In the street, is it gravel, asphalt?
It's asphalt.
And the college maintains it or the state?
Yes.
College.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Skidmore, go ahead.
The dogs or the fenced-in area is the backyard, is what you say. Dogs will never be near the street.
Other questions? Do we have a motion regarding the special use permit only?
Only concern I got is that wooden fence, which is their privilege, but like was mentioned, coyotes, bears will get over top of anything for kind food. But a chain-linked fence would be more of a deterrent.
For wildlife that way, yes. They will find a way, but it takes them a while. Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. A special permit request by Miss Mover for the purpose of establishing of a commercial camp round be approved with the condition of no more than seven total animals.
And adding, we'd like to add the six-foot fence on there?
That's fine.
Okay.
Are you, clarification, are you, Jane Lee, are you going to let the wood?
No, I think the wood.
We'll give the option on the fence, but we'd like you to just consider what's been said here, okay? Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, we'll just go around the room then. Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Prangman, yes. We will, the motion is approved here, special use permit. We will pass it on to the county board of supervisors for their next meeting and I want to thank you very much.
That meeting's February 11th.
It will be at the February 11th meeting. Okay, we have one more public hearing. Yes, sir. Mr. Love?
Our last public hearing for the night is the consideration of a special use permit request by Kevin Wilson on behalf of Cardinals Roost LLC.
I want to thank everybody. I know some people are leaving, but I want to thank you for your attendance here. We'll give a second for everybody to leave here.
I'm going to be right back.
Okay.
Is my staff intro going? Are we going to give it?
Okay.
So the third public hearing is considered special use permit request by Kevin Wilson on behalf of Cardinals Roost LLC for the purpose of establishment of a commercial campground on tax map parcels. There's two parcels involved, 121A-22 and 121A-23B located on the south side of CC Camp Road, just state Route 737, approximately 0.4 miles from its intersection with Verso Road, State Route 633. These parcels are zone A1 agricultural conservation. This public hearing has been duly advertised in the Formable Herald and adjoining property owners were sent notification letters. It's in your packet. The purpose of this, applicant is looking to seek 12 campsites along with shower and bath facilities. As part of this application, he did have a review by VDOT. I did draft up some potential conditions for your consideration, which you can certainly modify, add to, or take from in your package. And the applicant is here to, I think, do a presentation and answer any questions. I did have one phone call, well, the county received one phone call on this early on from a Ms. Doralee Jackson expressing concern. She has a relationship, she's, she represented an adjoining property owner, which I think may have signed up on your list. I had no other calls for or against this application since we advertised, except you do have a letter in your packet. It's the last page of the, it's after the letters from the previous hearing. This is from Michaela Kearns, who is 432 CC Camp Road. For your knowledge, this is the house directly across from where this property is located. So it's across CC Camp Road. The concern there was increased traffic during construction, safety risk associated with the development, loss of privacy, and noise pollution. So those are the issues that they raised, she raised, and you have that in your packet that you can read over. I'd be glad to answer any other questions that you all might have with me.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Love regarding the special use permit here?
As you see in the packet, these are geodesic domes with a decking around them. And you've seen the schematic or the rendering of what a bath facility might look like.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come up and give us a brief overview?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And I think I have a slide deck that's going to come up here. Mr. Love, you mentioned on the phone that up is down, left is right. How does the clicker work?
Get you fixed up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
When you advance inside, we'll get it down.
Page up.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Technical difficulties.
It's nighttime at the campground right there.
That's right. Yeah, it's a live feed of the forest.
Oh, no. Okay. Just kidding. Mr. Wilson, you want to give us a brief overview while they're working on the slide thing?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. A lot of sort of my prepared remarks do sort of rely on some of the visuals there, but you know, we can go ahead.
There we go.
Fantastic. All I had to do was threaten to start talking.
There you go.
Great, well, good evening and thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. As has been said, my name is Kevin Wilson. I'm the co-owner of Camp Yellow Cardinal and general manager. I'm joined this evening by my lovely wife and business partner, Laura Wilson. Tonight, we're going to share our vision for our boutique campground project, Camp Yellow Cardinal. We'll address some of the likely concerns for a development of this nature and ultimately request your support for a special use permit to allow for a campground and accessory uses. And we may be stuck here.
It is, yeah.
I'm happy to just say next, if you're able to control from back there.
There we are.
All right, I'll just verbally indicate, thanks. I appreciate that. So yeah, we're thrilled to bring modern luxury and upscale outdoor recreation to the properties you see here on the screen right off CC Camp Road here in Prince Edward County. Next slide, please. With over 24 acres of wooded land just west of Maheron, Virginia, we have found the perfect spot to bring this concept to life. A little bit about us as a company, if you could go to the next slide, please. At Camp Yellow Cardinal, we bring luxury and a love of the great outdoors to the adventure curious. We aim to build more than a campground here. It's an escape that blends modern design, outdoor adventure, and a deep respect for our natural surroundings. It's designed to give people the chance to relax, recharge, and explore everything that Prince Edward County has to offer. Next slide, please. Here you're going to see our master site plan for this project. I know that it's a little difficult, a lot of details on that page, but I think you should all have that in your packet. A few key features to bring up here. First, we're proposing a phased approach to construction. The first phase will include six campsites, a central bathhouse, a communal pavilion, and small camp store, a 16-car parking lot, and essential utilities being brought to the site. Please note that outside of a modest business sign, post and rail fence, and controlled access gate, we are committed to leaving the front third of this property undeveloped. In fact, we plan on adding a few evergreen trees to this portion of the property to preserve all of our neighbors' forested sightlines year-round. In Phase Two, we plan to add six new campsites, a second bathhouse, and a few amenities like a barrel sauna to the property. Next slide, please. Here you can see a few illustrations of the entrance to Camp Yellow Cardinal from Camp Road. Guests will enter the campground through a controlled access gate and drive roughly 800 feet into the woods to our parking lot, where they will unload their gear into provided wagons and walk to their campsites. Next slide. It's important to note here that we will not accommodate RVs or campers, also no ATVs, dirt bikes, or mopeds. No vehicles except for fire and police will be permitted beyond the parking lot. I've met briefly with Mr. Trey Pyle, the county's emergency management coordinator, to ensure that our path system is designed throughout the campground to accommodate, you know, the width needed for emergency response vehicles should the need ever arise. Close to the parking lot, we'll have a common area pavilion, camp information board, and a small camp store. The camp store will house my office and have a landline available there in case of emergencies. Next slide, please. So this is sort of our main attraction. Each campsite will feature a 19-foot diameter geodesic dome atop a 25-foot by 25-foot deck. Our building plans focus on low-impact construction, avoiding existing trees while working with the existing landscape and terrain. Each accommodation is thoughtfully spaced to maintain privacy and a peaceful atmosphere, creating a sense of seclusion for all of our guests. The units themselves are high-quality, featuring modern amenities like king-size beds, propane grills, and private hot tubs at each site. The aim here is really to offer quiet comfort in the heart of nature. Next slide. Our master design ensures that a centrally-located bathhouse is just a short walk from each campsite. The same door code that gives guests access to their dome will give them access to their private bathroom facility. Low-voltage landscape lighting along the paths throughout the campground will ensure that guests can safely get to and from their bathhouse at night. Next slide, please. In the spirit of providing unique and remarkable experience for our guests, we plan to add a secluded barrel sauna and sunset observation deck early in Phase Two of construction. Experiences like these will have guests coming back time and time again, excitedly sharing about their rejuvenating vacation in Prince Edward. Next slide. A quick note about the clientele we aim to attract at Camp Yellow Cardinal. With a marketing focus on couples seeking peaceful, nature-centric getaways, we aim to avoid the pitfalls of hosting rowdy groups or partiers right from the get-go. With a projected average nightly rate of over $250, we aim to further ensure that we're only attracting the highest caliber of guests to our campground. Next slide, please. Now, we know that any new project in a community invariably raises questions about impact. We've worked hard to address those thoughtfully and thoroughly in our business plan and our design process. At Camp Yellow Cardinal, we're deeply committed to being a considerate neighbor. With a modest number of campsites, a projected occupancy rate of around 60%, and guests expected to arrive together in single vehicles, we do not anticipate a significant impact on local traffic. By prohibiting driving throughout the campground and providing privacy fencing around the parking lot, we're confident that we can minimize any disruption from the presence of cars. Furthermore, by conserving roughly the front six acres of the property on our land and providing significant buffers between our project and any neighbor's property line, Camp Yellow Cardinal aims to be as non-disruptive to the surrounding community as possible. A few additional policies to add to this commitment. We will enforce quiet hours between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM. We will install remote noise monitors throughout the campground to allow management to respond promptly if noise levels exceed those set by the county's noise ordinance. Next slide, please. Luxury and comfort are central to our guest experience, but sustainability is equally important to us. Our plan preserves much of the existing tree canopy. It exceeds the setback requirements from property lines and respects the natural landscape. Additionally, we plan to use native landscaping throughout the campsite to reduce irrigation needs and to support local wildlife. For waste management, we'll use wildlife-proof containers, schedule regular commercial pickups, and conduct daily inspections to keep the area clean. To limit light pollution, we've chosen low-impact outdoor lighting that protects the natural night sky. We've also carefully planned water usage with low-flow fixtures and off-site laundry to minimize the potential burden on the local water table. Next slide, please. At Camp Yellow Cardinal, guest safety and the safety of the surrounding community is our top priority. Fires often come up when you're talking about having a campground and we've been really robust in our planning around this. Fires will only be allowed in designated fire pits or wood-burning stoves. They must remain small, manageable, and never left unattended. Only properly-seasoned firewood may be burned, no trash or deadfall, and Virginia's 4:00 PM burning law will be enforced during the months that it's active. To further ensure safety, candles and incense are prohibited in the domes and smoking is not allowed in the domes, the bathhouse, or even on the trail system. Our fire pits are designed with a 36-inch steel ring insert surrounded by 24 inches of landscaping stones and include a domed spark screen, tongs, a shovel, five gallons each of water and sand, and a metal ash bucket at every site. Staff will utilize covered ash pits to safely store and fully extinguish partially burnt wood before disposal. In the domes, wood-burning stoves will be installed with fire-resistant hearth mats below them and spark arrestors on the chimney to prevent embers from drifting around the campsite. Each dome will be equipped with a smoke detector and a fire extinguisher. Zooming out from those details, camp structures will be spaced to prevent fire spread. The grounds will have wide trails and an entrance to accommodate emergency vehicles. All structures will be geo-tagged and labeled within the county's emergency response system. The property already features a really strong cellular signal, but we will add Starlink Wi-Fi and have a landline at the camp store for reliable emergency communication. but we will add Starlink Wi-Fi and have a landline at the camp store for reliable emergency communication. Updated fire safety information will be prominently displayed on our information board, and that will include notices when burning is prohibited due to hazardous conditions. Finally, all of our marketing materials and guest communications will emphasize fire safety education, really trying to foster a safe, enjoyable, and responsible experience for everyone that comes. Next slide, please. In recent years, boutique glamping resorts have become valued additions to communities all over the country. Camp Ferncrest in New York and Glamp Blue Ridge in Georgia are just two that attract visitors from across the country, they boost their local economies, and enhance their respective locality's reputation as sought-after destinations. I've connected with the owners of both of these glamp grounds, among others, and their guidance will be invaluable as we develop our project further. We definitely aspire to bring similar success and lasting benefits to Prince Edward County with Camp Yellow Cardinal. Next slide, please. We will have a positive impact on the local economy in several ways. From construction to hospitality, maintenance, and landscaping, our campground will create new jobs. We are committed to hiring locally and offering competitive wages, ensuring that these jobs benefit people right here in Prince Edward. Additionally, Camp Yellow Cardinal will attract tourists who will contribute to local businesses such as restaurants, shops, and recreational services. We will help bolster the great work that's already underway, letting the world know that Prince Edward is the number-one spot in central Virginia for outdoor recreation and high-quality, unique stays. We're dedicated to being active, long-term partners in this community, and we see this project as a way to support sustainable growth and economic stability for years to come. Next slide. Thank you very much for your consideration this evening. I do appreciate your time. I respectfully ask for your recommendation to approve this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, there'll be six domes initially?
Yes, sir.
Maybe I didn't see in your package, or maybe it was in here and I just didn't see it, but how close is your nearest neighbor residence to...
Right here, and I'm right next to them. That's too close.
How close to your nearest...
We share a property line.
How close is the nearest dome to the neighbor's house?
So, if looking at the master site plan, it would be about 1,000 feet through the woods.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Mr. Wilson?
I guess you're going to put in wells to supply water?
Yes, sir.
And one for each phase?
Depending on what we're able to produce. If we are able to have a strong enough flow at one site, then we'll pump to the second bathhouse.
And how will you... You mentioned noise monitors. Who's going to be minding these noise monitors? Do you live on site?
I will not be living on site, but I am going to be... This is going to be my full-time job. I will be the general manager and owner. So I will be monitoring... Very early days, our plan is, you know, beyond hiring cleaning and maintenance staff. We'll be looking to hire a GM in the community that can be responsive to any concerns, a little bit faster than I can. I'm about an hour door-to-door. So, you know, I will be responsive to anything like that. But yeah, the plan is to hire staff that would be, you know, that would be part of their...
I noticed you mentioned your price would exclude certain clientele. Basically, keeping like parties out, college kids from, you know, throwing a party there.
Sure.
If there's nobody there monitoring this, you know, other than the noise monitors, how are you going to know that this doesn't turn into a party destination?
Yeah, absolutely. So a couple of things. I mean, beyond noise monitors, we will also have some cameras on site that will allow us to monitor the entrance and some of the common areas without invading people's privacy, that sort of thing. So I'll have eyes, you know, on that and be able to know between, you know, noise and visual what's going on. We'll also utilize... There's several services that we're evaluating right now that do basically identity verification when someone books. A big problem that you hear about in like the Airbnb world is that, you know, maybe somebody gets a stolen credit card or something off the dark web, and then they book a place for a night to throw a party and then just trash it and run, right? You know, we will employ a service that will verify the identity of, you know, the card matches up with who's making the booking. And so, I mean, every step along the way is, you know, between our marketing, our pricing, and then the backstop security features are there to ensure that the person is who they say they are and that they're coming for a quiet, you know, couple nights in the woods.
Will it be staff there 24 hours a day?
Not 24 hours a day, but seven days a week, yes, sir.
And will you... Are you going to have like a generator if power goes out for the water and the...
We will have a generator to, yeah, to make sure that the water still flows and that sort of thing.
In your garbage collection, you're going to have different bins in different places? Will your staff be collecting that, putting it in a dumpster where a truck will come in and pick it up?
Yeah, so we will, you know, each site will have its own smaller bins. Those will go to the rolling supercans at a central location, and that will facilitate the move to a single dumpster, probably a four- or five-yard dumpster that a truck will pick up.
Garbage will attract animals.
Yeah, and there's the age-old saying that, you know, the smartness of wildlife oftentimes exceeds the intelligence of the folks, the people that need to use it. So we're going to try and strike that balance and have very, you know, fenced in and, I mean, as wildlife-proof as we can possibly make it. But routine, you know, power washing and all of those things to make sure that, you know, we're not attracting...
I didn't see a maintenance building. Are you going to have a facility like for lawnmowers and weeders?
Sure, so on it, again, that site plan is pretty small. But if you look near the pavilion and camp store, there's a small fence there and a little storage facility where we will have, you know, all the accoutrements that you need to maintain things, you know, from tools and some of the supplies, things like that.
And that'll be a locked storage area that is only accessible by your maintenance person, then?
Yes.
It is a little small.
It's the shape of these two lots. Trying to get them into a rectangle without just making it, you know, a huge map was a challenge.
Other questions for Mr. Wilson?
The time period between the two phases?
Yeah.
Were you looking at?
So if everything were to go according to plan and we're, you know, we hope that we're financially solvent, popular, and all of that, probably be about two years between the two phases. You know, to total transparency, you know, the six domes in the initial phase are really our priority. And the addition of the sauna and the sunset deck, I think those are amenities and features that our guests would likely look for. So that would really be our first priority in Phase Two. And then we would make, you know, make a judgment call basically at that point on what's sustainable and what works best for the site.
Mr. Wilson, is there boutique glamping anywhere else in Virginia right now?
Yeah, there are. I mean, so here in Prince Edward, if we looked at Sandy River with the teepees, that's a great example. Up near La Raye, there's a site that has... Currently, it has three geodesic domes. They're looking to add six more.
Okay.
And there's a smattering of smaller operators around the country. Those are the two that really come to mind, or around the state, rather.
And again, it may be in this package, but forgive me for asking, but what is your Phase One construction period? How long is that going to take, do you think, from the first groundbreaking to...
Sure, so, I mean, as I sort of mentioned, you know, we're trying to be really cognizant of working with the natural terrain and all that. And so, we're not building, you know, we're not building huge structures here. The bathhouse is the biggest undertaking, and the rest of it is decks that could go up in a couple of days, frankly. And so, when we look at that timeline, we're allotting three to four months, start to finish.
Do you expect most traffic on weekends? Or do you think there'll be a lot during the week as well?
You know, operations like this definitely see weekends are going to be a popular time for people to, you know, don't have work and that sort of thing. So, yes, you know, we think that, you know, Thursday through Sunday is going to be sort of the peak part of the week.
What about the logging trucks? You're going to have to have logging trucks there. You've got to move a lot of woods. Can we hold the questions again? I apologize. Do we have the...
Oh, this guy has three minutes. I'm waiting for him to run in three minutes.
Okay. He doesn't have three as a presenter. He's making a presenter as the applicant, okay? But we'll certainly have you come up, okay?
Would you like me to respond to anything there or wait?
Not yet. Just wait. One question for you, the number of campsites or number of sites.
Yeah.
Right now, the limit is you're looking at...
Twelve.
Twelve, twelve maps, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be part of the, our conditions if, you know, for the special use permit.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Are you limiting the number of cars per campsite or anything like that?
I mean, right now is just an expectation that this is primarily marketed to couples that are likely to arrive in one.
How many... So each dome is just one bed?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like, two, three, four families aren't coming to one dome?
Exactly, yeah. And, you know, our booking process is going to suss that out, and all of our communication is, you know, somebody's trying to bring five or six people, and like, you're going to have to book three domes for that.
You're not going to have 50 cars at a time?
No, no.
Other questions for the applicant, Mr. Wilson? Thank you, sir. We'll probably call on you maybe to answer some questions once this...
Yeah, happy to.
... hearing's open up, okay?
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. With that in mind, we'll open the public hearing, and I do have some names on the list here. Again, I'll ask you just to come up to the podium. And I apologize if I messed up a last name. Edward... Is it Boardzuk?
Yeah, Boardzuk.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I've lived here for over 12 years now. I moved from New Jersey to get away from it, to get some peace and quiet. I live right next door to this thing. I got a map of this. There's no way I'm going to have any peace and quiet, all right? There's going to be no woods. They're going to mow down all the woods. All this stuff he's putting on this little property, how is he going to put that all there? Then you got cars. It's a one-way street, all right? With my sister going through cancer treatments, all right? You got sick people on the road with ambulance coming down. There's no way with all that trucking, logging, that road's going to be crazy. Plus, he can't guarantee trucking people ain't going to be walking through my yard. I got people that hunt in my backyard. Now, I get a New Yorker gets shot from coming down getting drunk and partying in the woods. And then he's got on this thing that he has a stream. Let me tell you something, that stream, I bought that house with that stream. I own the stream. So whatever's on his paper is all made-up stuff. And I got this a month before this hearing, so I don't know how long this has been in development.
The stream runs through your property?
Through my property. The spring comes up through my property and goes to his property, only because I haven't dammed it off yet.
Okay.
You can't dam it off?
You can't dam it.
Why not? Even if I put trout in there, I can't dam off my stream?
No.
Really?
Inland waterways will not permit that, you know?
But then the polluting and something, like I said, the noise, he can't show noise. There's going to be noise, come on. He's bringing people from wherever. I've seen these places up north. They destroy the land.
Well, that's why, as was mentioned in earlier discussion, we do have noise ordinance and everything. I just want to address that, but I appreciate what you're saying.
And I got this a month before this hearing, and it's like, you know, what they're showing me on this map, there's going to be no privacy for me. And then he can't guarantee all these cars, pollution, garbage stinking. I going to deal with that when I moved out here for privacy? I mean, I pay my taxes on time. I haven't missed a payment. And all of a sudden, they want to do this camping and framping or whatever? You know, I'm not into this new age stuff. Find a hippie camp, put it somewhere else. There's plenty of woods out there. You know, I totally object to it.
Okay, and that's why...
Yeah, I'm totally against it, all right?
Okay, thank you. William?
Yes.
Okay.
My name's William Boardzuk. I currently own the home at 343 CC Camp Road.
Okay.
We've lived here for 12 years. It's been quiet. We have wild animals. We live around hunters. These are a lot of retired people, older people. I work during the evening, so I have to sleep during the daytime. If I get no sleep, it's not going to be a result of me not getting quiet, because I had quiet prior. You're going to have vehicles coming in and out doing construction. Now, I mean, I can sleep pretty well, but noise will keep me up. And you have unknowns. You cannot guarantee anybody that rents or takes these little cabins is going to be anything other than a perfect citizen. Now, none of us are angels, but come on. These are unknown people that are going to come from all over. And if you throw a price tag of, what is it, $285? That doesn't guarantee a classy person. Money doesn't buy class. I hate to say it. I've seen people with a lot of money treat things like hell. We all know about the Hollywood people destroying hotel rooms. And these might be called bungalows, but if you're going to make a well, are you going to then pipe into my well, which is right near this property? And then that will affect my water pressure or my water in general. It's bad enough when we have a power failure like we had that two, three years ago. I had to get through 13 days with no energy. I had no shower for 13 days. You want to talk about pioneer living? Nothing. No heat, 13 days in February with an ice storm, and I still went to work. Half of it was my vacation. And now we have unknowns coming in that want to just... Okay, it's nice to build a camp, but this is a residential area in rural Virginia. There's not like no homes here. Disneyland didn't drop down right in the middle of the neighborhood and say, oh, sorry, we want to put a park right here. We're sorry if all the water rides inconvenience you. 1,000 feet from the nearest little dome, that's fine. But we have hunters in my woods on their own property. We can't guarantee that if they're back there hunting, somebody doesn't wander into the woods. I'd hate to hear any accidents. I myself don't hunt, but I know a lot of people who do. This could be very dangerous. This is not an area where... We have homes all over that area, and to drop a campsite right down in the middle of a residential is kind of odd to me. I always pictured that being placed off of a main artery, so people go in there and there aren't a lot of homes around. I've been to Sandy River Reservoir. It's a nice place. But the last I looked, I didn't see a lot of residential homes around there. I saw teepees. I saw wide-open land. I saw big expanses. And then I saw Sandy River, and I saw their distillery. But that's the way that was set up. We live right next to this. So any kind of privacy we thought we had, I can't say I won't see a wandering drunk stumbling into my property. I don't know who that person is. I can't then confront them. Now I have to call the police? That's a little unsettling. I mean, this is something, we came here for peace and quiet. First time I got down here, I loved it. People were waving at me. I said, wow, it's amazing. Everybody's so friendly. And then I had peace and quiet. I could relax, go in my backyard. I loved it. You know what I mean? But this is something that could throw everything out of whack. I'm not saying it's the end of the world, but it's too much for this particular place. I have a lot of neighbors, and it just, to me, I'm against it. I just, I object to it.
I totally appreciate your comments. What the board does. Terrell Eames?
Good evening. My name is Terrell Eames. I live at...
I'm sorry, Terrell. I mispronounced it. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. It's a lifetime of mispronouncements. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd love this opportunity just to give my notes on the issue at hand. I live at 366 CC Camp Road. I live in a home my mother put there in 1994 on land given to her that was purchased by my grandfather 50, 60 years ago. I have no plans on leaving. I live in this community very purposefully. My expectation is peace and quiet. I use my road to walk my nephew in his stroller. My niece learned how to ride a bike on this road. This is not the middle of the woods. This is not out a forest in the middle of nowhere. This is dead center of a community, a thriving community. Homes with people that are retired, families. It's not the middle of nowhere. I have 12 and a half acres. I have a pond out back behind my house. If one of these people decide they want to come do some fishing on my property at night, is that something now that I have to worry about? I work late. I come home at night. Now I have to be concerned about who's staying across the road from me? This is not a commercial area. There is no other businesses. We have what the equivalent is of a meat processing center called Duffy's on 360 in Verso, which is the only real business. This is not a place where couples are going to find cute, fun times. They're going to find hard-working people that are just trying to go to work every day and raise their families and not in the middle of a commercial center. We do not want to be the center of business. We do not want people in and out of our neighborhood constantly, strangers wandering around in our neighborhood. It's not why we moved to a dead-end road. Our road is a dead end. Our road is a dead end. It is not a thoroughfare. There are not cars constantly going back and forth. The people that are on our road are there purposefully for the quiet, the solitude and the peace. And all that will be erased if you allow this project to continue.
Thank you very much. Those are the only three people that signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience which to speak for or against the special use permit? Okay, sure.
Hello, I'm Doralee Jackson. I'm the one that helped call for the Borzeks. I live at 42 Zine Hill Road, end of High School Road. I've visited them for the last three years. I've been there. It's a very quiet, peaceful. During school time, you might see the bus go up and down the road. And really, that's the only traffic I've really seen on that road since I've been, you know, visiting with them. But, and ditto on all of this stuff about the elderly and the handicap living on that road. I mean, you got to stop and think about that, you know. There's not a lot of traffic. And also, they're close to 360. They're about a mile from 360, okay? As far as bringing the business to Farmville, why would you come to Farmville 20 some miles away when Keyesville is like 10 or maybe just a few more minutes away from this area? It's going to attract more business to go into Keyesville than coming to Farmville. I mean, they've got almost as much in Keyesville as they do here in Farmville. Maybe a little bit more, but not that much. So why go the distance?
Well, the impact would be what we call the county, where those, where anybody decides to go, you know, it's certainly up to them. But I understand what you're saying, the location here.
Yeah, are their taxes, if this is going to be a business, so. So then when their, their property is reevaluated because of what's in the area, that's going to cause the taxes for this area to go up.
Yes, please. Mr. Love?
So I've served as staff with the Board of Equilization before, so I have a little knowledge of that. Taxation is based on real sales in a region, so it would be based on home sales for homes of a like similar structure, similar build. It would not be based on an application or even a business that's nearby.
Was there one at the last time they reevaluated? But that wouldn't have an impact, it's not impacted by a business, is what Mr. Love is saying, yes.
If he built this, this would increase his taxes because he would have structures which would be taxed. It would not increase your tax.
It doesn't change yours. Your tax when it's reviewed would be based upon your property, both the acreage and the structure on that property.
And also, I want to also bring out the point that since it is so close to Route 360, who's to say we wouldn't get more criminal activity in the area? I mean, you probably, I didn't do exactly the research, but I'm pretty sure that that part of the Eric County is, does not have any crime in it. So there is a good possibility that the crime level and the police or whatever might be called there more so than what's being called there now.
Well, right now, just from what I've read, it looks like if there's six sites, they'd be looking at maxing the 12 people there at a given time. Yeah, I know, but I mean, starting off, yes.
Well, and, excuse me, but $285 a night for two people? People that you can go stay in the campground of Twin Lakes, much cheaper. So, I mean, it's, it's just going to be put there, I think, and will not be anything well for this county. It will not help this county at all.
I don't want to speak to their business model, but the $285 is something that is directed towards theirs. Twin Lakes has their direction, so I think, you know, we have to look at it from the board here. We look at what their request on this question is permanent.
I understand that. I'm just saying from, I mean, my husband and I, when I was married, my husband and I compared to a $285, okay, who's to say, oh yeah, I'm going to rent it, but hey, y'all come and share the place with me. So therefore, it's going to be four people instead of two people. They can't guarantee that. They're not going to guarantee only two people are going to stay in that thing. For $285 a night, I'll split the difference, you know, that type of thing. But, I mean, I know that you've shared a motel room with other people, so same, same thing, okay? Stop and think about that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you all so much and I hope that y'all.
Well, thank you for, thank you for your input.
Y'all don't, don't pass this.
Mr. Wilson, did you want to come up and address any of the comments? First, I apologize. Nobody else will speak. We'll close the public hearing this time. Mr. Wilson, if you'll just address, but address it to the board here, but with their questions. One is about location. I guess the question would be, is there any type of fencing around the project that you have? That would be protected that way?
Absolutely. You know, we recognize that, you know, in this community, between hunting and then just the simple aspect of trespassing, it's something that we don't want to have an impact on anybody else's land. And we certainly don't want anybody, you know, wandering between a deer and a hunter. So, you know, we, we plan on ample signage, letting our guests know, you know, hey, you're approaching, you know, the edge of the property. And then where appropriate, we're going to put some, some wire fencing to just make absolutely certain that none of our guests could accidentally leave the property. You know, as far as, as construction noise and logging trucks and that sort of thing, you know, I mean, we don't anticipate that, that any of the noise in the development of this would exceed that of building a house on this property. You know, concerns about logging trucks and needing, you know, every aspect of our plan really takes into consideration these, these older growth trees that are there, the beauty that's there, and how little we want to disturb that. So, you know, we're going to be very specific in terms of where we situate each of the decks, where we situate the bathhouse to minimize the number of, of trees that have to come down. When I did sort of back of the napkin math, sort of looking at how much in terms of acreage we would need to disturb here, you know, we're looking at over 24 and a half acres between these two plots. And as I put the square footage of each dome, of the bathhouse, of the drive-in, everything like that, came to about three quarters of an acre. So we're, we're really not talking, you know, massive disruption to, to what's there. Really, everything about our plan is the preservation of that. You know, in, in terms of, of, you know, water and, and, you know, as I mentioned in my presentation, you know, we're, we're not having any laundry facilities on site. Everything that we're doing in terms of providing water for our guests is in recognition that we're operating off of a well and there's a little bit of a limited supply there. That would be the same, you know, when I, I think in the packet you all saw that we had soils tested for septic and everything and that was, everything came back very positive for that and in conversations informally with our consultant on that, you know, the, the wells that, that we're looking at, at putting there really wouldn't be largely different than, than putting in a house. To speak to just sort of the, the, the nature of, of these two lots. You know, I think one thing, it's just, it's really important to note that like with these two lots, you know, by right, we could put two homes on each of these things. I have no interest in doing that, but we could have, you know, short-term rentals on, you know, with four of these houses with an occupancy of 12 in each of those houses. I mean, that could be 48 cars coming and going. I really want to respect the, the quiet nature of this area and work with the community. In late November, when I went and I knocked on, on every door up and down CC Camp Road and had a lot of positive feedback from, from folks in the area saying that it sounded like great ideas. I did, yes, sir.
Sir, I just, again, the public hearing was closed, okay?
Sorry, I lost my train of thought there. You know, really, at the end of the day, I want to, I want to work with the quiet nature of the area and build our project in such a way that, that we're not seeing a huge influx of traffic on that road and that, you know, folks are coming in, they're parking their cars, and this is an opportunity for folks to just spend, you know, a quiet night or two in the woods. I can't really speak to criminal activity other than the fact that we're going to take every effort and precaution to, you know, know our guests, verify who they are, monitor it both noise and visually, and having a staff presence there. I mean, you know, this, we're relying on a lot of technology to, to make this, this business viable and make it sort of that modern experience that, that modern guests expect. But this is a personal business, you know, this hospitality business. I'm going to be there. I'm going to know who's coming and going. This is not something that you set and forget and I check on it, you know, every six months and, you know, make sure that there's still money coming in, you know. So, you know, this is, this is something that as a very active owner-manager, former entrepreneur with, in the restaurant hospitality space, I, I know what it takes to, to be there and make sure that it's running smoothly. And I, and I will say, just in sort of in closing, in terms of, you know, one thing that we always reserve is the right to refuse service. You know, if somebody is acting out, if somebody's a problem, you know, troublemaker, we kick them out. Like, you know, $285 is, is not worth, you know, the potential destruction they could do to, to my property, to my business, our reputation as a business and to the community as well. So, you know, that's, that's always that failsafe of just saying, hey, get out of here. I thank everybody for their time. If any other questions that I can answer, I'm happy to, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, thank you for following up there. Okay, much appreciated.
Absolutely.
Questions amongst the board here regarding that? So we have 24 acres as we're talking about right here, right? Two 12-acre lots, basically is the way it's set up.
Where is it situated on the road? It's a dead-end road. Are you in the middle of the road, towards the end of the road?
It's about halfway down the CC Camp Road. It's about, I think it's probably about a three-quarter mile road and we're maybe a half gallon.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and recognize the legitimate concerns of the opposition to this special use permit. But having camp for 50 years, come ten camping all the way up through RVs, I think Mr. Wilson's proposal hits all the points that I would have questions about. So based on that, I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of the special use permit from Mr. Wilson behalf of Cardinals, Ruse, LLC for a commercial campground.
Is it too late to ask a question?
Clarification.
Proceedural question? For Mr. Wilson or for, for the board?
For the board, yes.
Is it possible to make this conditional upon? Permit for six, see if the neighbors' concerns pan out and then we grant?
One, one of the conditions we can put in, I mean, one of the conditions we could put in there is the limit right now is six. It would be up to the applicant to come back to the board.
So that's already?
That can be done. We talked about.
It's not yet, but it can be.
12 in there right now.
Okay.
And that was phase two. Phase one would be that way. We could put in there that there is six, if I'm not mistaken, but that's a challenge.
You need to have a, you need to, he needs to agree to that.
But he has to come back to us because he has to agree with the conditions we put in there. I think you agreed to the original conditions.
But if you, if you do that.
Yes.
You have to start over with this public hearing and it has to go through an amendment and then we start all over.
So.
So I don't, you have to ask the applicant if he'll even accept that.
I'm wondering if that would alleviate some of the concerns of the neighboring.
Their business model may not allow for six and that's not me putting the words in your mouth, but.
Okay, well, I mean, if, if the.
That would be up to the board here to discuss that.
If the request is for 12, then I guess we go forward with 12 then, correct?
Yes, that's where we went. We agreed to a max of 12.
And I think, do you, do you want to limit that? Because I don't, I didn't, I want to be, I didn't specifically put that in there.
My motion is for as requested.
As requested with a max of 12 where we had, okay.
May I, may I ask one thing? I know you mentioned earlier about leaving as much buffer, natural buffer as you can between the residential property beside the, did you state how much that you think it will be?
So off of the property line, I believe that it's a 35-foot set path.
Yes.
And we're looking at a minimum of 50 off the actual property line. And the distance from any neighbor's structures is, I mean, it's sort of a rough approximation that I could do sort of on Google Maps. It's about 1,000 feet.
And most of that is wooden?
They've got that, sir.
Yeah, we have that already. Yes, sir. Thank you.
And their site plan does not have any development in the first third.
Right, right.
So their site plan kind of.
It addresses that, I think, with the distance away.
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't call for anything in the front of the property.
But right now, we have a motion and a second, and I'll just go through the board here the same way. Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sandlin?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Prangeman? Yes, we, we would, based upon here, we're moving the motion or moving the special use permit to the County Board of Supervisors for the next meeting, which would be February 11th. What our job here again is, is the County Planning Commission, we vet the special use permits that come up or any other thing that comes here, and then we move it from here to the County Board of Supervisors, okay?
Through, through the, through the issuance of a special use permit if the board approves it.
It's just a special use permit, okay, but we reviewed it and based upon the special use permit, it meets all our criteria. Okay, so it is moved forward. Next on the agenda would be a review of supervisors' actions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at the last board meeting, the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved the special use permit for the Dunnington Mansion to become a rural events center, which includes weddings and rural events. So that, that permit's been issued to them.
Right.
And they upheld all the conditions that you all had specified, which includes the one-year.
Excuse me, ma'am, ma'am, no offense, but if you want to take conversation, it would have to be outside. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Love.
That's okay. Can we move on to?
Yes.
That was the only supervisor action from the last meeting. Under old business?
We do have one old business. It is not a public hearing. This is a formal response. The board had questions?
Chairman, may I, may I speak first before we go into the old business? I just wanted, like to address something that was brought to my attention by County Administrator Doug Stanley last week. It appears that someone, whether a concerned citizen or another individual, had raised a concern about my involvement in the proposed solar farm project. Specifically, the accusation is that I am biased against the project because I sold a house on Falkland Road near the proposed site to someone who voiced opposition to the solar farm at last month's public hearing. The claim was made that I should have recused myself. I feel it is important to clarify the situation. I spoke with Mr. Love several days prior to the December meeting and disclosed the fact, this fact to him. I asked whether I needed to recuse myself and he informed me that I did not need to as a transaction had occurred over five years ago. After the complaint was made against me, Mr. Stanley reached out to a state official and it was confirmed that given the five-year timeframe, recusal was not necessary.
Okay.
I want to assure everyone that I have acted ethically and without bias when I made the motion to table the vote on this project. As I stated during the meeting, we were presented with additional information and opinions that required further review so we could make an informed decision for the citizens of Princeville County. Although I am not obligated to recuse myself, I have decided to do so to eliminate any doubt regarding my ethics and integrity.
Ms. Sandlin, thank you very much.
Ms. Overhart?
Thank you, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mr. Wilson. Thank you. Just to go back to what I said, so this is not a public hearing. This is strictly a formal response that the board has requested regarding this. So there's no involvement here from the community. This is strictly, the response is coming to the board here. That's what, so the special use permit from Gabriel Solar is just a presentation related to the board. You're welcome to. You're welcome to see and listen, but we're not looking for any involvement from the people in the audience here. We had that involvement at the previous public hearing.
And there will be?
And there will be another one, wherever it goes, there will be another one at an upcoming County Board of Supervisors meeting. Our job was to table it, because we needed further information in reference to a few things, such as batteries and things like that, that we wanted some answers on, and that's why the applicant has come back to make that presentation. Again, everybody's welcome to stay, but it is strictly a presentation to the board. It doesn't impact, it's not here for the community involved, and I hope you understand that, and I appreciate that. Come on up.
Mr. Chairman, I'm stepping out.
Oh, yes, thank you, sir. And thank you for coming back to clarify some of the things that we had concerns or reservations on at the previous presentation.
Thank you. Hopefully, we can get the remote control. So, thank you, I just want to thank everybody for the time and community engagement, and especially the time of the planning committee. My name is Michael Cook, I'm Director of Development for Gabriel Solar. I'm joined here by Jenna Wood, who's also an associate in development for Gabriel, and then two of our colleagues here, working a professional engineer and civil engineer, as well as site control and working a layman with all the property over. So, we're here to answer any other questions you have. I think it's going to be, you know, respecting everyone's time, there's a fair amount of information. I believe you have a formal...
Thank you for your patience, too. You were the last one on the board.
It's always interesting, and, you know, you should have a packet with sort of the detailed written responses to your questions, and so we'll try to go through those quickly, of course. If you want us to slow down or go back, we're more than happy to do that. With that, I'll invite Jenna to just sort of give us a quick recap of some aspects of the project.
Yeah, so, as a reminder, Gabriel Solar is an 80-megawatt solar farm with a 30-megawatt or 120-megawatt hour best, that's the battery energy storage system, that's going to be located on about 1,200 acres. So, this Gabriel Solar project proudly supports American manufacturing jobs, we utilize American-made equipment. There would be no pollution, noise, or traffic after construction is done for the lifetime of this project. This project lifespan is approximately 40 years, and Gabriel Energy will not be sold. We will own and operate through the lifetime, and then decommission through the lifetime of this project. Although it is located on about 1,200 acres, that entire portion will not be covered in solar panels. The project also includes about half of that area is setbacks, vegetative buffers, pollinator plants, and wetland protection. We will also be adding agricultural use to the land through the addition of sheep farming and an apiary use as well, with a local beekeeper. During construction, this will support around 300 well-paying jobs, and over the total lifetime of the project, from real estate tax, solar revenue sharing, and deciding agreement that we are negotiating with the county, we expect around $12.7 million to, over the course of that 40 years, to go for county revenue. So, here is a reminder of the location of the project map. So, this site's accessible on New Bethel, Verso, and Falkland Roads, and any site entrances are built to satisfy standards set by the Virginia Department of Transportation.
In terms of economic benefits, as Jenna just mentioned, we expect $12.7 million in revenue over the course of the project. It's a very kind of specific and transparent calculation. Anybody's welcome to go through the details of that. And so, again, this is a 125 times increase of what would be the value of that to the county of just the current land tax base. And again, that's a combination. We're also looking at local opportunities. We've talked to the county, and see what, it's always interesting to see what that, those funds might be used for. There's been some discussion of Verso Park, which is right there in the community, and I'm sure as time would go on, we hopefully see very specific earmarks that some of the revenue may be destined for. Now, we'll get into some of the more technical parts of the project. There's a lot of questions about energy storage.
Yes.
I think we have some good data for folks, and, of course, we have a couple of firefighters happening to be in the planning committee, so that led to, I'm sure, a lot of the detailed questions as well. So, we'll go through it in detail, and, you know, first, we'll talk about really what our best systems, and we can talk about the systems that our company has used in Europe to this point. Obviously, we have a lot of more detailed meetings and discussions and final product selection, et cetera, but we'll just go through that about them in general, and then talking about the fire safety designs that are integrated into it and into the sites themselves, and then talking about really how we partner with communities in terms of fire safety protocols and things like that. And then, at the end of this, there were some questions around environmental considerations of panels, and then finally about wildlife, any impacts to wildlife. Sound good? Okay, so, as we discussed, this is really a rendering of an example. These are LG systems that are used by our company in Europe today. There's even some more modern ones that we're looking at now. Again, the final selection hasn't been made, but these are really good for us to be looking at in specific detail. The benefit of adding best to solar project, of course, solar projects, you know, there's totally clean, lack of pollution, obviously, in this case, in integrating agricultural use, but it's intermittent, right? Sunshines, you get peak production, you know, at night, less so, in winter, less so, and so best is really attractive also to Dominion and to utility companies, because it can help level out and allow us to put energy into the system when they have peak needs. So, we're able to really optimize. There's not much storage in the overall grid, and so this, you know, is attractive also for Dominion, because it allows them to balance energy production and peak usage time, so essentially the purpose of it. Importantly, and we'll get into the fire safety aspects, and there's things in the media you can read recently, not all best systems are the same. So, what you're typically dealing with are lithium-ion systems. In this case, the cases we're using, these are lithium-ion phosphate systems, it's a totally different material system, much, much, a lot of the reasons for selecting those systems that we've done in Europe already is because they don't have fire risks that lithium-ion does. We'll get into that in more detail.
Quick question, how many locations are we looking at on the project?
There'd basically be one area in the northeastern section of it. The whole area we've looked at would be somewhere within, you know, something like maximum...
There'd just be one storage area is where we're talking?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, this is just a generic layout of a common best system, as you can see here. You know, these are, the cells go into, on the upper left, go into battery packs, those are formed in racks. Off-gas detection, for example, depending upon the type of battery that you use, they emit, if there's even overheating, long before there's any fire, they start to emit certain gases, and so there's early detection of many layers of redundancy and safety for that. There's fire suppression systems, again, this is, we would not, we're not planning on using lithium-ion, even in those cases, the modern systems for those, which is not what you just saw happen in California, you would have like aerosol suppression systems that actually stop the chemical reaction before it's initiated. So, these are very specialized fire suppression systems that are integrated into the overall product design. And then, of course, there's the battery management and systems that are also managing the flow back and forth to the grid and really power optimization, and these are all in turn monitored. So, for example, even the fire suppression system is constantly monitored to note it is online, not just the system itself. You can detect a performance down to the cell and the pack level, so you can see if there's even non-optimal output, or depending on heat levels, et cetera, all of that is very closely monitored, not just at the site, but even remotely. So, it's all integrated into the overall facilities. Fire safety, again, the, this is designed as part of the system itself. So, you have automated fire suppression systems and containerized environmental controls in each of these containers. In between the containers, we create inflammable buffers. So, these are on concrete pads, we also put in gravel and other inflammable materials in between those, and they're modular. Even within the modules, they're designed so, in worst-case scenario, they can't propagate across the module, but then the container itself is contained, preventing off-gassing of any toxic fumes, things like that. Again, we'll get into the lithium-ion phosphate, but it doesn't, A, it doesn't produce oxygen, even under a flammable condition. It can tolerate heat twice the level of lithium-ion in normal performance. It doesn't generate flammable gases. What happens with these lithium-ion situations, it's generating oxygen and flammable gases, and it's much more sensitive to heat, so it really has a maximum performance about 300 degrees. These systems we're using go up to 500 degrees. They don't generate oxygen, they don't generate toxic gases or flammable gases, so it's a completely different system. And the reason you select, what we're selecting, would be, fire safety is chief among them. So, you know, what we put in our phones, in our computers, in our cars, has to be very small spaces. So, when we're into best system, we can afford a bigger space. They're not quite as efficient, but we choose them because of the fire safety ratings and lack of toxicity risk. Okay. So, again, even if they're rare, again, it's all integrated into design, and then, of course, we're going to meet all local, state, and federal codes in terms of fire safety, and work on the details of that plan with the county.
Can I ask a crazy question? Again, I'm not on the fire department. If I could ask a crazy question here? So, you say you monitor this, so if there's an alarm or something that says they were having an issue here, does that communication go to the local fire department?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and of course, we would set all of this up, so I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. We'll have many design, detailed design meetings, we'll have a joint plan that we work together, training and readiness, et cetera, but yes, typically, these are good news.
So, that would be worked out with Mr. Powell in advance, so we know, at the same time, you find out immediately, they're notified.
That's the common practice, sir.
Sir, is what I would call a breaker per unit?
Yes, sir.
If the fire department shows up, they can, or whoever, shut this one unit down?
Absolutely, and actually, you can shut down segments within the unit, within a certain cell, within the unit, absolutely, and some of that is automated, even when you see, so, there's an anomaly in just performance before there's a fire issue. If it wasn't emitting, or it's getting warmer, I mean, these are all climate-controlled, and they're cooled systems, but if there's something that was an anomaly in how it's performing, that can be shut down, even from outside the system as well. And we work with, I mean, the training programs that the local fire department would have in collaboration with, obviously, Dominion, that would also include very clear guidance on when to engage, when to not engage, access protocols, so we would work with the county on all the response protocols as well. And very familiar with the exact technologies and the firefighting techniques for those. So, again, early warning, and again, this is not, I'm just giving you some general issues, because you read about this, and we can even talk about the California situation, which actually is a great case for us, because we have a fundamentally different design on many levels from what you see happen there, and so it sort of really vindicates what our approach has already been in other places where we've put these systems in Europe, for example, and that couldn't ever happen with our system, for example. So, again, fire suppression is part of it, interrupting the chemical chain reaction before it occurs, 24/7 monitoring of sensors in the fires, the systems themselves, the fire safety systems themselves are monitored. Deflagration is that, you know, in the event that there could be off-gassing, you can actually contain any of the gases within the compartment, which normally would be vented, and segmentation, of course, is how they're designed to separate any risk of propagation across within modules or outside, from, you know, container to container. Even the materials down to everything from circuits, electronics, et cetera, they're all selected for fire safety qualities as well, so. Let's see, again, we can go as deep as you want, I don't want to bring everyone to sleep here. Again, so there's multi-sensors in these systems, you know, smoke, gas, heat, obviously, really for any early detections, not just for fire, but any kind of unusual, you know, performance of the system. But they clearly are tailored to detect any early issues related to overheating, overcharging, et cetera, and that are integrated into the system. Fire alarm control panels, which we work in collaboration with early responders, and how those are communicated into your emergency response system, and then, of course, EMS, so it's not just firefighting, but if there was someone injured or something at the site, we'll have all coordinated protocols, so the county officials are clear on how they can handle those. So, next, again, high level on fire preparedness, so we provide training resources in many communities, we have annual training refreshers, so we acquaint everybody on, first of all, we collaborate on what is the overall plan. You're welcome to talk to other jurisdictions where we operate today, at the state level as well, so we really like everybody to be able to share best practices, but typically, we have, and we fund an annual training and refresher, and if there's any changes in technologies or things, we walk everyone through that and what the implications are of those, so that's usually, and of course, long before anything's operational during construction, pre-construction, we're going through on all the fire safety and emergency responses, you know, even during construction. If there was an event to happen with a construction worker, for example, we want all those plans are laid out well ahead of time with the county. Let's see, so, that's really related to, and of course, you know, worst-case scenario, if there's any evacuation or something, we were working on your, whatever your standard protocols are, like 911, public alert, response systems, et cetera, but it's hard to imagine that occurring with the system of this design. Again, just want to be responsive to all the questions we've had. Liquid cooling systems, they use both liquid and air cooling systems, that's part of thermal management. Again, what we're using in lithium-ion phosphate systems are much more tolerant of, they don't generate nearly as much heat, they don't pack as much energy, and that's why they're slightly larger, but they can even tolerate much higher operating temperatures as well, they don't need them. So, there's really less of risks or issues with cooling and thermal management, but, again, all these systems are integrated in this case. They do use glycol systems, all meeting UL, NFPA, EPA standards, and shown to have minimal environmental risk, and, of course, their specialized handling procedures as well, and these are all self-contained systems as well. And the BMS at each, in each module is managing the battery management to ensure there's no overcharging, things like that, optimal management of that. So, site design, these are just some generic examples. We could show you other specific examples, but really, of how you see they're modular, again, and they're really confined to a certain area within our project, will be a maximum of a few acres of that region, and they're all containerized, you know, IP55 certified, they don't need, there were some questions about roof coverage, et cetera, they don't require roof, they're really, they work in the Arctic, they're in deserts, you know, they really can be anywhere in the world. And I think that's what we had, in terms of some general specification, just more for you to have some data. There's plenty more where this came from, if you want to understand how it meets national, international standards. Okay, and there's a lot of questions that come up around cadmium telluride, so if we want to pivot from the best fire safety for a moment, or if you'd like to ask any questions there, I thought I'd go into the...
I think we're okay, because of what you're talking about, is the phosphate and everything, the additional protection. Mr. Powell, do you feel comfortable where we are right now?
Everything that you said is research to have.
Okay, okay.
Not from the MABD, nor...
Yes, yeah. If you feel comfortable, and...
Everything he said, but he wants to...
Okay, okay, thank you. No, you can, we can move forward, then, okay?
Okay, and there's other good news around cadmium telluride, so, again, there's a lot of misinformation around solar in general, but cadmium telluride specifically. So, this is not cadmium, right, which is in batteries, et cetera, this is not a cadmium production facility, we're not making batteries or things like. This cadmium telluride is a non-volatile, highly-stable compound, and it is considered nontoxic, and that is used in about 30% of the solar panels in the United States today. It is versus cadmium, which, of course, is a toxic and, you know, is harmful to humans and can be digested, cadmium telluride cannot, and is non-soluble in water as well. Not only that, but these are sandwiched inside panes, are built to withstand storms, hail, et cetera, and importantly, they're non-volatile in ambient conditions, even, and there's government testing over more than 20 years, and laboratories creating the most extreme environments you could imagine, of fire, tornadoes, et cetera, grinding these into powders, and then seeing, are they soluble? What if they were ingested? If they go to groundwater, do they leach into well water, et cetera? And we have all the data related to this, again, it's federal data, and it's shown to be totally safe. to be totally safe and non-harmful to humans. And so again, they're considered non-hazardous waste, so they would be suitable to go into a landfill as non-hazardous waste. That is not what happens. So we have binding commitments, they will be recycled. They're actually worth a lot of money. So at decommissioning, or when you have a broken panel, or for some reason it's not working, we recycle those. And they're recycled in the United States because the elements within them are worth money. And we have binding commitments that we will do that. And actually, probably at the board meeting, we'll have somebody come from First Solar to be able to speak. On contrary, we're proud that most solar developers in the United States use Chinese panels. They're much cheaper, they actually have pretty good performance. There's a lot of government funding kind of swamping the market right now, and we've always used only US manufactured. And these aren't just assembled, they're manufactured in the United States, they're recycled in the United States, they're maintained in the United States. So we're bio-American, including the related electrical equipment. That's part of our brand. But compliance string construction, we own that, you know, as one of the largest developers in Virginia, in Virginia specifically, you'll find these challenges have all happened in Virginia versus Pennsylvania, where we also do work, or West Virginia, for example. There's some very specific civil requirements in Pennsylvania. And we have had challenges really to do with stormwater runoff just during the construction phase. And, you know, we just had hurricane, for example, you have these extreme events, and if things haven't been properly stabilized, you can have stormwater runoff. Now, I will say that these were all just only during the construction phase. We take them very seriously. All those events have been mitigated. We self-report. So that's our policy. So we're the first ones to make the phone call and say, we think there's something here. And we invite DEQ to do the investigation. And so it's all self-reported in all of these cases. And we have, when we found contractors we were working with who weren't doing it the right way, we've stopped working with them. Same with people within the company. So we've moved on and shown people the door who weren't managing to our level of expectation and compliance. So we now are also rolling out enhanced environmental training ahead of construction. And actually, we're putting this into the contracts of all of our contract firms as well. So they're highly incentivized and required, and would be penalized if there's any violations on site. So I think that's, oh, wildlife. Importantly, these are large sites and a lot of land use. It's clean, we're farming the sun. As we said, there's no noise and traffic, you know, unlike, we're not adding children to your schools and things while we pay taxes, but it's a big piece of land, and this is beautifully forested land. So as Jenna mentioned, out of the 1,200 acres, and not even including between panels, we don't even count that, there's at least 500 acres approximately that we'd look at as being set aside, essentially. These are setbacks and include wildlife corridors, wetland management. And what you see is, when you look at a map like that, this is just sort of a close-up to show you the fences that go around, they really hug around the panels themselves. You look at these perimeters where we just show like view sheds and where we're going to maintain a minimum, the tree buffers, but people assume that's where there's fence lines. But no, that's just the border of the project. So the fences really hug around the panels roughly. And then the connections between areas, particularly in the wetlands, are typically underground. So you don't even see wires above ground. And in between these areas, we're able to put in wildlife corridors. It's a regular part of our designs, and we're going to get into all those details as we get into subsequent reviews. We've already incorporated a lot of inputs from a few bad people who are hunting, or they have historically hunted in various areas. So we're going to put those features in, and we enjoy doing that, honestly. This is a 40-year, we will own this project for 40 years. We will try to be good neighbors to this community for 40 years. So let's do it now. And we have, there's a lot of established designs that, how do you let in small mammals? They find refuge in there. How do you let deer in without letting in wolves or coyotes, right? There's, there's designs that do this in the fences very effectively. And so I think what's interesting is the biodiversity, even whether it's hunters and waterfall, and it really takes off with all the planning of pollinators, some protection, even with the sheep that can coexist with sheep. You'll hear a lot of folks say that they see a lot more wildlife around these projects when they're designed like this. Again, a good solar project is designed well. A bad solar project is not. We've all seen these eyesores by the highway, wherever that's a bad project, and that's not what we're proposing. I think that's it. Appreciate your time. Any questions anyone has, happy answer.
From the board's standpoint, did we, did they address what our concerns were relative to the last meeting when we tabled it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think there, Ms. Wood would like to address some questions on item 25 about panel compo.
On the conditions. Yeah, we had a couple of questions and amendments to the conditions that we wanted to discuss with you, but most important is number 25, where there's a list of materials that have to be, must be excluded from the project. One of those materials that's listed is cadmium telluride. So we would definitely need to take the mention of that, the cadmium telluride, in that list out. The list, that list also names cadmium and tellurium. And while we don't use those elements in those forms, we would like to also take out the mention of those two to avoid confusion in the public, but either way, we don't use those two elements. But we definitely need to remove the mention of cadmium telluride from that, like prohibited materials list, because that is the technology that the panels will be. Another, another question we had was on like the road maintenance, and there, this is number 22 and 23, on defining delivery route.
Right. It's very open-ended, you know, and I don't think it was intended that way, but as we look at, especially the bonds that we'd be putting up, clearly we own that if there's any temporary, we do videos and things like this of what everything was like before we started construction, when we finished. But a delivery route could be multi-state. I mean.
I can actually address that. I've named the major roads that these sites are on. We do require a traffic management plan that gets reviewed by VDOT. VDOT does review the road bond that we would ask you to put up front for maintenance or damage that might occur. So your construction traffic management plan would be the vehicle that would completely define the delivery routes. I'm going to rely on, if it's, if this moves forward, we, and on any site, we rely on VDOT to tell us and identify any potential issues with existing bridges. So if they make us aware and say, there's a bridge that they can't have heavy trucking, we would work with you all on that. But the construction traffic management plan is what we will use. And I don't, we haven't identified all the routes yet, but I just identified the roads that tie into this project.
We're going to talk about the seven entrances in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to reference back to that VDOT plan, that's very typical. We even do studies ahead of time on where we let small roads in routing trucks and things like that.
We let VDOT take the lead on that naturally, so working with VDOT in advance. Okay. Other questions or other responses to our questions? I think, from my standpoint, I think you covered everything we were looking for. Anything else, Mr. Love, that maybe they didn't cover?
I don't think so. I sent them the condition that you have.
Right.
The one thing they did offer up, and I did add that, is the soil testing.
Right. They saw the soil testing.
They offered up 10 sites for this. That's also for y'all, all review and consent. But they gave us a detailed document on what, how they, their methodology, and then the frequency. And again, Board of Supervisors was pretty firm that they will require annual soil testing. But they said, item 31A shows no less than 10. That's what they, they offered up in there. So if you're comfortable with that, but I just wanted you to know that we've made that.
That was one of the questions we really had.
It was.
Frequency and, you know, how many soil tests were going to be done on the property? Anything else? I think we're, I want to say thank you very much. We needed to, on behalf, on behalf of the, not only the, not only the residents, nearby residents, but the county itself, you know, how are we protected? How are we taking care of some of these things? The soil, everything else, so that we're not, we're not causing an issue here. Instead, we're actually, like you said, we're trying to create a solar farm and keep it somewhat, as we call it, in nature at the same time.
Yeah. Folks shouldn't see it, and it will be a quiet neighbor. And cadmium telluride, we appreciate that. Most importantly, it's completely safe. There are a lot of Chinese manufacturers planting the seeds of this within the US because they know that the US manufacturer uses the system. We appreciate your understanding.
I do want to note, too, that they had provided a draft, it's not final, it's not for final review, emergency action, emergency management plan, and that was reviewed by Mr. Powell. Don't think you had any concerns of that as it is written now. Obviously, that's subject to change.
We want you to be a good neighbor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hold on, we just, we need to, okay, that's right. Because we tabled it, we need to, we need to have a motion to move this forward to the County Board of Supervisors with all the amendments and changes we asked for.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
And for clarification, does that include removal of cadmium telluride?
As presented.
As presented, yes. Okay. So we'll go around the room. Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
I know you abstained, Mrs. Sandlin. Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Prangman votes yes. This has been approved, we move it on to the County Board of Supervisors at their February meeting?
February 11th meeting. There will be a public hearing on this matter, so the public does get to speak at that, at that meeting. This was old business, so that's why it was conducted this way. But there will be a live public. I'll be sending out notification letters ahead of that. You can, citizens can communicate, written.
Right.
Email, come to the meeting or call in.
And I do want to thank everybody for their patience and attention here. We have two little things to take care of, new business and assignment of our next meeting, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Stay warm.
All right.
Okay. New business.
Yes, sir.
Very decent. I can't say that I remember visiting, I was like, that's, I didn't ask his hours. But it was on the low. She called that.
We're going to be through with the meeting just sort of.
We got about, we got about one minute, and we should.
Well, if you give us about five minutes, y'all could take that outside.
Can you do it then, sir? But thank you.
Yeah. Give us, if you give us about two minutes.
Just a couple minutes.
About two minutes, sir. So in your, only item I have for new business, I prepared the 2024 end of the year report. Obviously, this is, the background on this, the code of Virginia requires end of the year report. We got the ordinance amendments considered, special use permits. You can see which, how many of those are processed this year. Flipping over, we ended up doing 181 zoning permits. This compares to 211 land of the previous year. I do want to say, we've got a different building permit package, so in previous years, I've given you some project costs. We're having a tweak in reporting. We hope we can do project cost reporting to you for next year, but I had a little pitfall in that, so I just include in total numbers. Total building permits issued was 796. The reason, you know, a typical home will generate a structural, electrical, HVAC, and plumbing, so that's why you've got that. But our project costs, we do know, we had a lot of commercialization in 2024. So our project values have gone up quite a bit. So we've had, I just don't have those, those numbers to actual quantify with consistency and accuracy, but we do know that our project costs have gone up, our permit revenues have gone up.
They don't include town, does it?
It does not. The town, we did 49, one or two family homes, we didn't do any duplexes, so that's single family homes. We did 24 manufactured homes. The town did four single family homes and one duplex in 2024.
But yeah, perspective, five years ago, they did about seven.
Yeah.
How many? What'd you say?
Seventy.
Seven zero.
Seven zero. Yeah. Last year was nine, this year was five. So mostly residential development is occurring in the county. I think that part of that is available land.
Yes. There's more landlocked.
There are more landlocked. So the urban sprawl, if you've heard, people, you know, it's, it's not people getting out of, say, Farmville, it's people coming from elsewhere, and then also just the availability of land you're locating in the county.
They've got about three residential projects reporting their A pipeline.
Yeah.
I wonder who in those, if they'll provide lots, we'll see a little bit more information about the town. Right now, everything in the county.
Yep. The town's got some developers that are looking to create lots, but that has to happen. And the other thing, you can see on CIP projects, most everything on the 2022 to 24 CIP has been, has been funded and built. Obviously, the elementary school is in stages of construction. Animal control is in the planning stage, but it's moving, moving forward. But the county has accomplished a lot.
I said you did good.
So that's the only thing I have of other business tonight. We do have your regular meeting, and I do have an application, so we will definitely